All right. Well, welcome, everybody. The council meeting February 19th, 2019. Returning, rejoining, or excuse me, reconvening after closed session. Mr. City Attorney, we have any items to report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are no items to report. However, we do anticipate going back into closed session after the regular items have been completed.
Thank you very much. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cardoza.
Here.
Councilmember Boom Garden.
Here.
Councilmember Espendola.
Here.
And Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
Very good. If we could have everybody's Stanford invocation by Councilmember Shaw, followed by a pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Boom Garden.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this glorious day that you've given us and thank you for the awesome responsibility that you've placed upon our shoulders. Thank you for the residents of this great city. Give us wisdom beyond our years. Give us humbleness and meekness in our decision and let us do what's best for everyone involved. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to move on to agenda item number one under Presentations and Proclamations. But before we do that, I want to notify everybody that item number eight has been pulled from the agenda and will not be heard today. We have a proclamation for the Frame Shop. Mike and Gail, are they both here? Come on down. And if the rest of the council would care to join me down at front, that would be great.
Mike and Gail Cowley of the Frame Shop, long time. We just got a, I think it may be one of your last customers. I think so. It may have been. In 1986, Mike and Gail moved to Yuba City, California, from Anchorage, Alaska with their two sons, Matthew and Nathan. In 1986, they purchased their Frame Shop at 523 Reeves Avenue. And the Frame Shop contributed to the community by providing countless donations to numerous organizational fundraisers. Mike is a member of the Marysville Rotary Club. He volunteered with the Little League when his sons were younger and also coached with the Special Olympic sports. As of January 31st, 2019, the owners, Mike and Gail Cowley, decided to retire the Frame Shop and close the doors after 51 years of business. You believe that? That's pretty awesome. They have some kind of record. And they plan on enjoying their retirement with their children, their seven grandchildren, and spending time with their friends. Of course, it's bittersweet ending to a longtime legacy in our community. The Frame Shop has brought much happiness and warmth to all who visited this hometown treasure and will truly be missed, but very well, more than well-deserved retirement after 51 years. Now therefore be resolved that I, Sean Harris, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby congratulate Mike and Gail Cowley on their retirement and recognize their commitment and contributions to the Yuba Sutter community and, of course, wish them very good fortune and best wishes in their very well-deserved retirement.
You know, when Gail and I came here, the only people we knew in this community were Charlie and Stella Price, who owned the shop before us. And this community really embraced us. And we're not planning on leaving and we want to thank the community. And one last thing I'd like to share with, I hope, Mr. Mayor and the City Council, that you will continue the tradition of being approachable as our former mayor, John Buckland, was. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much. And we have the privilege of having one more proclamation. In recognition of Black History Month, could Lynetta O'Reilly from Yuba City Unified School District please come forward? Hi Lynetta, how are you?
I'm good.
I'm going to give this first. I sometimes forget to do that. African-American history is a very large part of American history and should be studied throughout the year. In 1976, February has been designated as a month in which especially memorable events should be recognized and celebrated. Black History Month is an occasion to rediscover the enduring stories of African-Americans and the gifts of freedom, purpose, and opportunity they have bestowed on our future generations. Black History Month is a call to each and every citizen of our great community to reflect on the cultural, scientific, political, and economic contributions of African-Americans which are woven throughout American society. We remember, learn from, and build on the past so that together, we can build a better and more prosperous future for all Americans. So now therefore be it resolved that I, Sean Harris, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2019, Black History Month. Thank you very much.
I'll be, I'll be brief as well. From slaves to freed people, the African-American community has endured and survived many challenges. Today, we are doctors, lawyers, educators, members of the armed forces, law enforcement. We are community leaders. We are elected officials. And Black History Month represents not only the challenges, but the successes that we will continue to have in this nation. I'm going to end by just a brief quote from Dr. Martin Luther King. And Dr. King said, "If you will protest courageously and yet with dignity and Christian love, when the history books are written in the future generations, the historians will have to pause and say, 'There lived a great people, a black people, who injected new meaning and dignity into the veins of civilization.'" On behalf of those that are present, that couldn't, that are here but could not all be here, we'd like to thank the City Council and the City of Yuba City for recognizing the importance of all races and all cultures in this United States. Thank you.
Did you want to take pictures together with the group down there?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're good?
We're good.
All right, number three. We have James Corliss here from the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, going to give us a brief overview. The Sacramento Area Council of Governments, otherwise known as SACOG.
Mayor Harris.
Yes.
Thank you so much for having me up here and on your agenda.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, that is much appreciated. Twenty-two cities and six counties that are members of the Council of Governments. And some of you may be familiar with us, but I just thought, again, since there's some new faces on this council, I take this opportunity just to reintroduce you a little bit of our, our organization. We are your council of governments. We represent the region. I'm actually still somewhat, somewhat new, year and a half on the job. Actually, I came from Washington DC where I ran a nonprofit and I worked with sort of mid-sized metropolitan regions all across the country and had never lived in this region before but have completely fallen for it. It's a very special place. And I just want to tell you a little bit about some of the things we're up to. I hope you know the role that we feel very proud to have played in Fifth Street Bridge. These were actually two successive funding awards for this bridge. Lots of, some other time I will explain to you all the kind of the backflips and the gymnastics that our staff did with the state, with the feds, and everything else. But we're delighted to see the Fifth Street Bridge getting rebuilt. We understand what a vital link that is between the two cities for all kinds of reasons: commerce, emergency preparedness, evacuation, et cetera. But the other thing that I wanted to impress upon you all and I'm really delighted that your staff is participating is, and something that has, we've just kind of kicked off the last couple of years, and that is to really try to figure out how can we bring innovation and creativity to public, the public sector? How can we think differently to solve today and tomorrow's problems? We will never have enough money to actually, you know, fix, to use the old way of thinking about solving problems. And so we brought a program called Civic Lab, and it really is, think of it sort of as a mini-university to try to solve the pressing problems of our six-county region. The first year we did Civic Lab, we took on the issue of, really of transportation, especially of public transportation, but really in kind of suburban and suburban areas and smaller cities. This was a really interesting team that sort of assembled with Rancho Cordova, Sac County, City of Sacramento, Folsom, Citrus Heights, looking at the problem of sort of suburban first-last mile. How do you, how do you get that sort of first-last mile, that first-last two, three miles in suburban regions like in eastern Sacramento County? Here's one solution to that, which I think is really fascinating and I, and we work obviously very closely with Keith and Yuba Sutter Transit up here. But this is a, this is a private provider named VIA. This is a pilot project in West Sacramento. It is run by your phone or call on the telephone to do door-to-door service. It's basically sort of, if Uber and a fixed route bus had a child, this was what it would look like. So it's on-demand, it's very high-tech, it goes door-to-door, but it carries more than just one passenger. Hopefully, we're getting two, three, four at a time. We've had tremendous stories out of West Sacramento, senior citizens that have said, "I go see my friends for the first time in a decade because I..." A woman who said, "I know, I go buy ice cream because I could never have it not melt on the three buses I had to take home, but now I've got door-to-door service. So I'm getting ice cream and I'm getting fresh fish for the first time in decades." So these are the kinds of services that maybe could be complementary to some of our fixed route transit. And it's a problem that we really do need to figure out how to solve, which is how to make public transit work in the 21st century where maybe we don't have the population density of the big cities to make it all work. Here's something that we're really proud of. This is an autonomous shuttle. This is the future. We are going autonomous. It's not going to be here tomorrow, although Thursday, I will tell you, you're welcome to come down to Sacramento State where we're going to launch, this is OLLE, the Autonomous Shuttle. Actually, right now, a couple of these are running around the Sacramento State campus. They are taking pictures. They are learning the map of the campus and they're going to open their doors later this week to students. It is very low speed right now in terms of making sure it's safe. Lots of the parts of this shuttle were actually 3D-printed. We are one of two regions that won this first test. And the fact that the SACOG board, and I just really want to recognize John Buckland in the back there, really pushing a lot of our innovation and laying the groundwork for this. But our board put money down that we were able to very quickly use as local match and only the Sacramento region and Phoenix won the first two tests of this local autonomous shuttle. So it seems far off, it seems far away, it seems sort of Jetsons, but this is what's coming. And we have to understand how to basically deploy autonomous vehicles for the good because they could actually work well for us or they could actually work not so well and create even more traffic. So we've got to be on top of that. The second year of Civic Lab has kicked off. This year, just in the last month, we've kicked off our second year because our teams have liked this program so much. I'm delighted to say, Yuba City, you all have a team in Civic Lab, and we're taking on basically infill development and the revitalization of old retail corridors. So Bridge Street is your corridor. We have five of six counties. We have 13 teams. And then again, the notion is, we're trying to bring some of the best minds in the country to help you solve your challenges. Only new, you know your local challenges, but we can provide some of the best kind of development folks, folks that do pro formas, folks that understand small business, folks that understand placemaking and bicycling and walking and transportation. In a couple of months, probably around May or June, we're going to do a really exciting thing we call Marketplace. We're working with the Urban Land Institute and we're just going to bring developers from all across the country and set up your teams to actually have prime kind of property sites with willing property owners that want to do something different and rethink their property. And we're going to have some of the, I think, the most innovative developers in the United States give your jurisdictions and your staff some feedback, right? Here's what it would take for me to actually rethink this and maybe redevelop some of these sites. This is an exciting program, again, just kicking off. It'll last through the fall and we're really excited to kind of showcase the geographic diversity of the region in this, this second year of Civic Lab. This all adds up to another pilot program that we really want Yuba City to participate in because you've got Bridge Street, you're in Civic Lab, it's a perfect fit. Without going into the full backstory, the state of California has given our region a very strict greenhouse gas reduction target to meet. We've got to reduce and show the state we can reduce greenhouse gas emissions from passenger vehicles by 19% per capita by 2035 in our, in our upcoming transportation plan for the region. The only way we can do that, that we've said to the state, is to basically accelerate infill development, accelerate transportation options like I showed you with that shuttle, and accelerate the deployment of electric vehicles. We're not saying no, but we're saying to the state, "You've got to help us. We're willing to play, but you have to help us on this." And so we've developed a program called Green Means Go. We're going to be going into the, to the state legislature, asking them to become a pilot project, the six counties, including Yuba City, so that we can experiment and test some of these things. We think we ought to be not the backyard, but the front yard of the state Capitol. We should be out here testing different ideas and approaches to things like infill development and then open sourcing it, letting the state understand what we've learned. This is, again, some of the projects that we have seen popping up around the region. Unfortunately, infill development is very, very hard to make work in our region. We basically have Bay Area labor costs, but Sacramento region price points. So there's a financial differential that we have to fill. There's all kinds of other barriers and restrictions that make this kind of sort of compact housing more expensive and hard to pencil. But we think we can take a serious run at this this year, and that's part of what we're trying to do through the Civic Lab program. And so that you get intersections like this, which you could see just about any part of our, of our region, any jurisdiction will have, will have a million of these, and we could see it begin to sprout innovative ideas such as this. And again, we're trying to partner with the private sector, trying to bring some of the best minds, the development community, not just around the state but around the country, as well as homegrown local developers, to help us think, how do we solve this problem? How do we provide housing options, housing choices for all ages, all income levels, and really create more vibrant, you know, 24/7 kinds of communities? Again, that map I showed you, we're really proud of the, again, the diversity showcasing Yuba City, but pairing you with places like Roseville and Rancho and Loomis and West Sacramento and Citrus Heights. Yes, you're all different. Yes, you all have your own very unique characteristics in these corridors, but frankly, there's a lot more that unites all of these places. And that's, again, the theme of the Civic Lab Year Two program. So I do want to say, and Mayor Harris, thanks again for, for the invite. Membership dues, you all pay us membership dues. We really appreciate those dues. It's a small part of our budget, less than 2%, but it's a critical part of our budget. It's the only part of our budget we can use to do state and federal advocacy. The Civic Lab programs I just told you a little bit about. We do study tours to Maryland and Virginia every, every year before the cap-to-cap tour back to DC. We've done a Friday tour because I have a lot of folks that I know back there. We've been going to suburban jurisdictions, learning about what they do. We went to Denver, Colorado a year ago, and we're going, we're planning for more of those. All, all super, super helpful in terms of your membership dues. We actually have, and I'm really, really delighted to have been at the kickoff of a youth leadership academy. We're taking high school seniors and juniors and showing them what regional planning and regional economics really means. And then finally, of course, as a council government should, we have a lot of shared services. We're building joint procurement, fuel contracts, HR, all kinds of things that it is far more efficient when we all get together and we do joint procurement as a region, as a collection of, of local governments than if we just do it one-off. I'd offer all of these. I know your staff knows about them, but I just tell you a little bit about why, why we think we were providing some value added. And honestly, for me too, just again, as a relative newcomer, how important the Yuba Sutter region is up here as part of our larger six-county region. And I'll tell you, we worked with your city and many others to put a grant proposal forward to the state to do an economic prosperity strategy driven by your jurisdictions for the two counties, all the cities within. What's the future economic roadmap? How do you make jobs? How do you keep your quality of life? And we're going to fold that in. If we get the grant, we'll fold that into a larger regional effort. So just a couple of dates to have in mind, then I'm done. I am nowhere near as brief or as eloquent as your first two speakers. Hard act to follow, but just some dates to know. Next Tuesday, February 26th at 5:00 PM, we are doing a bit of a workshop for, on our long-range transportation plan for all the elected officials in Sutter County, Yuba City, Live Oak. So that's, we'll, we'll get that invitation out to you next Tuesday, February 26th at 5:00 PM. I mentioned a bit of this infill incentive program. We are trying to get funding from the state to provide those incentives. We really would love to get a pre-application from Yuba City. Your staff knows about this for this Green Means Go program. We're trying to make that honestly as simple as possible, not trying to be bureaucratic. It's a one-page application. Tell us your hopes and visions. Tell us your visions for, for Bridge Street or infill development or electric vehicles or the future of mass transit in Yuba City. And we'll put those into a larger regional application to the state to try to get this thing to happen. The Civic Lab program, I mentioned the developer marketplace, there'll be opportunities, I believe, for, for you to sort of witness and see what your team is up to. I haven't mentioned much about it, but we are working very closely with the Chamber and Greater Sacramento Economic Council on a regional economic prosperity plan. We hope to have that released this summer or fall. Each of the counties will have to approve this. It's what's called ARSES, our Comprehensive Development Strategy for the six-county region. And finally, our transportation plan, gobbledygook, lots of acronyms, MTPSCS. This is super important, even if it's a lot of acronyms. It is not only the place where we have to hit that greenhouse gas target, it's the place where all the transportation projects come together in one place and get funded and we move forward to the state and feds for funding. Final plan adoption, February 2020. Again, Mayor Harris, delighted that you are the representative for Yuba City on the board. Look forward to working with you, and if I can answer any questions, I'd be happy to. I just want to thank you very much for your time.
Just a comment. I've had the opportunity to attend SACOG as Mayor Harris's alternate and also at the Policy and Innovation Committee meeting that was held while the mayor was out of town. And I just want to thank you and your staff, very welcoming, very accommodating, very patient with questions, a lot of information, but all really good stuff. And I think the whole notion of acting as a region, whether it's within our close region or just regionally, is going to be huge for this, for this city. It has been, and I hope that it will continue. But I wanted to thank you for taking the time to come up here and present to us, but also thank you for, for the kindness and the patience you've shown when I've come to your meetings.
And I was just going to echo that as well. As James, I've only been to a few meetings myself, but the professionalism, the openness in which I was accepted into the fold and the education you provided so far. I think John said it best when he says, "It's not drinking from a fire hose, it's drinking from a fire hydrant." And I think that's pretty much sums it up. And I want to take the time to likewise acknowledge the work and effort that John clearly put in during his time at SACOG, the relationships he established there definitely paid dividends, and I appreciate that. And we're looking forward to working with you. I do have one question on the Green Means Go. The, of course, we have a unique interest in Bridge Street here. What is, are there any next steps that we can do as a council or a city to help see that do fruition at this point?
So here's the interesting, and this is a couple of observations. I don't, I didn't even give you that many. Again, as a new, relative newcomer, I don't think we are nearly as powerful in the state legislature as we need to be. They don't even know where half of our jurisdictions are. So we need to get together as a region, and we're, we're going big on this program. In order to get them to understand that we are serious, we mean business, and we're aspirational, we're asking for these pre-applications by March 15th. We would love it if you, as a council, could pass a resolution in support of the program. Because the more I have of those, the more we can impress upon the legislature that, again, we're, we're a region and we're serious and we mean business. Will we be successful? I don't know. We're going to give it everything we have. So again, those two things, a pre-application, your staff is already aware of this, and on top of it, I'm sure it will come back to council. And if you could get a resolution, simple one, it would be just fantastic to show the legislature just how serious, again, the, our region is. We need to stick together. I think the other thing I was just going to say, and it sounds like you, you understand it, but it, I believe from working in regional planning a long time, local control is absolutely important. You make decisions. It is your city, it's your future. But just like I coached my kids in soccer, we're a team. As a region, we have 28 players. There's no way that we can win one by one. There's no way that we actually just win just playing our own, by our own set of rules all the time. So it's always that kind of delicate balancing act, right? But I'm absolutely convinced that your two counties and the cities within up here are just critical to the success of the larger region. We actually have gone out of our way to redo a lot of our data to make sure, even at the national level, folks like the Brookings Institution do an economic analysis of the region, they're including Yuba and Sutter, that you're not just sort of an afterthought, that you're part and parcel of the six counties. So that's how important it is for us as a, as an agency in a region.
Well, very good. Thank you. I believe we are, we do have a resolution in the works. Yep, I thought so. Very good. Thank you very much, James. Really appreciate you driving up. And did you...
Yeah, through the mayor, I just have a question. So in the Green Means Go, so you're going to cover that on the 26th a little further or is just...
We'll cover a little bit there. That'll be, in some ways, about the long-range transportation plan. I'd be happy to answer questions then or now.
Well, it's, I can wait until the 26th, but I, just in interest of what you mentioned, the next steps and the importance, and so I'd like to learn a little bit more about that on the 26th.
Happy to.
So Mayor, I think we need a point of clarification. So the City Council has a workshop on the 26th that's for budget and transportation. That's separate than SACOG's elected officials session on the 26th.
And I believe it's just about exactly the same time.
Is it a conflict in time?
Yes.
All right, we'll look into that.
Will you have the opportunity?
That was unintentional, if that's, if I've got the right time.
Perhaps in the interim, we can go ahead and answer Councilmember Espendola's question now, since she was going to ask that.
I was hoping to receive a little bit more outline of what he explained on the 26th, but, you know.
The...
I don't have all the information to be able to qualify my question well.
Well, you have a business card, maybe you can...
I would be happy to.
There you go.
You know where to find me.
There you go.
All right. We'll look into the workshop timing, just to make sure there's not a conflict. I might have the, it's possible I put the wrong time on there. If that's the case, my apologies. But we'll make sure that you all, somebody can attend it. If not, we'll reschedule.
Thank you very much, James.
Okay.
All right. Number four. Ben, Corporation Yard Emergency Operation Project Award. Microphone.
Good evening, Mayor Harris, members of the council. All right, the item before you is in regards to the award of contract work to construct two emergency generators at the Corporation Yard. So in 2017, after the Warville incident and, and some different federal grants came out, the city applied for a FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant, which paid for $150,000 of an approximate $200,000 budget for, to install two generators as backup at the Corporation Yard. Kind of found out through that incident that these are really, we know they're critical facilities, but without backup power, it's, it really could be felt across the city because of the services they provide for police, fire, and the fleet, and then also the 24/7 services that happen through the public works and different functions of the city when we have an emergency. So with that, we applied for a grant. We received $150,000. In 2018, council elected to accept that grant with matching funds. In 20, late 2018, in November, we purchased two Kohler generators. Due to the, the timing, the lead time to buy the generators, we bought the generators directly from the company and have those ordered and... We bought the generators directly from the company and have those ordered and slated for delivery around early May, late April, is my current understanding of the schedule. And then with this, we contracted, we put out a bid to contract the work to basically build the pads, construct the sites, and then connect it into the switch panels, into the electrical panels and put the switchgear in. So we bid in January, opened the bids, January 28th, three bids were received. With the low bid being Hankins Group at $135,000 and change. We talked to the contractors, you know, surprised us a little bit for the work, you know, we're talking about a couple of concrete pads and running wire to the buildings. Why were the prices so high, you know, even getting prices up here? Some pretty amazing prices that were coming through. And, you know, from far places. And basically, they really, there's the work environment with what's going on right now, with just everybody being busy. They gave me the spread with some tariffs on materials and metal, you know, and the wage rates, but really just some crazy, crazy prices. We thought Hankins gave us a relatively good bid. You know, I don't know if, we don't feel like it maybe will be any better if we go back out. And so in order to keep that, this project moving forward and meet the federal guidelines and the time constraints, that we move forward with the low bid at Hankins. So with that, basically, we're looking at a project of $135,000 for the construction and then approximately $19,000 to $20,000 in construction contingency and management pending if we need to use it. If you combine that with the total project, you're looking at a total project of $108,000 to $109,000, what we bought the generators for directly, plus the contract work to install it, puts a total project about $264. So with that, staff recommends that we, we have items A through C, which is, adopt the fine of Class 1 categorical exemption for the project, accept all bids, an award to the Hankins Group and the amount bid, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Through the mayor. Ben, I forgot to ask this this morning, I'm sorry.
I want to clarify too, these numbers, these numbers right here, these are total project numbers when they're put together. This should be 212,294 and that should be 219,000. So I want to make sure it's correct. So it's not quite as extreme as we're looking at right there, but there is a big difference. But it's 135 with the next bidder up being 212. So I apologize for that.
Ben, can you go back to the sketch that has the locations? There you go, thank you. On the main building, is that going to be in the way?
You know, Manny, that was my first red flag. When I talked to the guys, I said, hey, why are we putting this there? You know, it's right in the drive aisle and where it could be a potential problem. And so we went out there and kicked it around with the Corporation Yard supervisors and staff and we really, we locate in the best, cheapest spot. We talked about areas over here, farther over here, but due to the location of the panel and then, and how to facilitate getting there and other problems where we'd back into or run into, that turned out to be probably the best spot. And we have it a little bit north of the fleet, so the fleet building could back out and maneuver without going into it. And this is a pretty wide area that people don't supposed to park and utilize. And then we have this one that's going to be tucked up here against the building.
Well, that's a good location. Yeah, there's no issues there, there's no doors. Now, is the entrance door to the back where the guys go in, go in and out, isn't that going to be in their way?
It's just to the south. And so if we're going to maintain that opening, there's going to be, there's a pretty good separation there between that.
Okay. I just, I just saw it's like, man, that's a poor spot, but okay. Thank you.
Ben, I appreciate you catching the math there on the difference. So it is 212,295?
Correct. The second bidder, BM Builders Incorporated, this should be $212,294. And then the third bidder, PC Incorporated Grover Beach, was 219,350. I don't know how those slipped in here and apologize for that confusion, but the staff report is correct.
Yeah, thank you. That's, I just wanted to confirm on that.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Ben, first of all, good job on preparing for our future in case of emergency. My prior military background, we always did this. And these are questions that I've asked our city manager when I was touring public works as how redundant we are and things of that nature. So kudos on that. The problem that I'm having an issue with in our contracts is why do we build in, it seems like on every contract, a 10% contingency? I know why we're paying more and it's because we're paying a premium for services because everybody's working right now. And so to get the job, we're going to pay a little bit more than a 92, that's why we're at 135. But a 10% contingency for change orders in the private sector, you're going to get change orders, that's going to hit the 10%. And I realize it's to prevent, to come back before the council to keep the project moving. But what is our average dip into contingency fees and why can't we tighten this up to where it's more along the lines of 5%, 4%? I'm just not comfortable with just a blanket 10% contingent because we, contractors can come up with a 10% change order pretty easy, you know. Can you help explain that and tell me how far we usually go into that contingent and how tight we can tighten this up?
You know, I could definitely look into it and provide those numbers to you, clarification. I could just, you know, my, my experience on it, I would say on a larger project, we usually get up around the 4% or 5% range. On a project like this, it really, it really varies. Usually, you know, for your carpet contract, we're going to hold the line and that's what it is. If it's, but at the same time, when you have a smaller contract, when you're dealing with a $100,000 contract, $10,000 doesn't go very far these days with prevailing wage. And so, so 10% has been a policy standard that we've added to it. We definitely stay with that for the smaller contracts, just so we're not having to deal with delays and coming back to the council for a $5,000 request or some small amount. But I would say that we have in the past and have done that due to budgets, we've gone with a lesser amount where the budget is restrained. So it's not mandated that we have to stay with 10% every time, absolutely. But I could definitely provide that information to the council and look into that kind of an average, what we've been on what size projects, give you kind of an understanding where we're at.
Okay. Through the mayor, I would appreciate that for the future because what I'd like to see in our contracts going forward is really what the contract bid is, is what we're going to end up paying. It's all-inclusive and expect very few change orders. And I understand that there's always the probability running into the unknown, especially when you're dealing with underground. But it just seems like we're approving some kind of blank checks out there with a 10% over the top, 10% over the top. And if historically it's been 5%, maybe we can come up with some kind of policy or something that can, you know, smaller projects under X number of dollars is 10%. If they're bigger projects, maybe we're smaller at 4% or 5%. But something that kind of helps us be more prudent with our finances to not give such levity with change orders. Could you get that information together for future?
We can't work on that and bring it back here.
Ben, it's my, my understanding that the 10%, if we do go over, they do have, it's vetted and they have to thoroughly justify.
So absolutely, I want to say that there's definitely not a blanket to the contractors. I mean, this is a low bid atmosphere, so people bid it, low bids, and then if the scope isn't exactly right, there are questioning and looking for some, certain contractors, certain others not. But that is, my staff's job is to basically hold the line and make them accountable that it's real, that we're just not blanket giving the money away. There's a process that goes through and we have to formalize it and sign off on it and vet it. And typically larger contractors, a force account where they have to specifically show us the time, material, what the approved markups to get through there. But I definitely understand Mr. Shaw's request and we could bring some of that information back to you guys.
Thank you very much. All right. Moving on to public communication. Am I forgetting something?
Through the mayor. I'd like to make staff's recommendation of adopting and finding Class 1 category exemptions for the project. B, accept all bids awarded to bid to the lowest response. Bitter to Corporation Yard Emergency Projects to Hawkins Group and Chico for the amount of $135,066. And C, authorize the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city and compliance with the material terms and conditions presented by the attached agreement. Subtle review and approval of legal from our city attorney.
And through the mayor, if I may, once, before we vote on it, if you could open it up for public comment, that would also be appreciated.
Sure.
Thank you. So opened. Yes, sir. Philip, please step up to the podium if you have a question.
I don't, I can just, what size of units are you putting in?
Phil, we need you to step up to the podium so you're recorded, please.
Phil Trainer, I would ask what size the units are. You have two Kohler units. Are they 35 megawatts, 35 kilowatts, 35 ohms? What are they? Public should know. Thank you.
Ben, is that a question you can answer right now?
You know, he caught me off guard on that one. So I apologize on that, but Mr. Trainer, I will be happy to follow up and we'll release information.
Very well, thank you very much for doing that.
There was a lot of thought actually put into that based on the, the size of the transformers at the Corporation Yard and the load and what's existing out of there. But we'll, we definitely wanted to make them efficient, but at the same time, meet the needs. So I'll follow up with that.
Thank you. All right, so now we have public comment. We have a motion to approve staff's recommendation. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you very much. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? All right, passed. Thank you very much. Now moving on to public communication. Anybody is welcome and encouraged to participate in the meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called and public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments and controversial items may be limited and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. I'd like to just point out that public comment is public comment, it's not necessarily question and answer back and forth. It's a, you make a comment on whatever issue you prefer for the record. Any written requests, members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will normally be allotted five minutes to speak. And we have, let's see here.
We received one from Jeff Stevens.
We do have one from Jeff Stevens.
Yes, and that's the only one.
Is Mr. Stevens, very good.
Thank you, council, for having me here today or at least let me speak. I'm a Jeff Stevens farmer from South Sutter County and we have Stevens Farmhouse out on Highway 99. Over the past few years, South Sutter County and all the county regions that I hear of are experiencing a major problem with trash being dumped, like refrigerators, mattresses. If any of you are familiar, just going out township or in my area, Carlson or anything, we have a, we have a lot of trash out there. And I would rant about it and talk about it and talk to the county about it and not much would happen. And one day I decided I was going to try to do something positive. So I've come up with a program, talked to Recology and on the last Saturdays of the month, they're going to open up to my group. I've created a group called Say Love. And that stands for Sutter and Yuba Love, where we're going to go out. I'm trying to get together a movement. It may be a movement of myself, but I'm hoping to get the council involved. I'm hoping to get Sutter County involved. I've talked to the chamber, I've talked to the farm bureau, everybody is very supportive. So our first event is this coming Saturday, we're leaving at Hope Point Community Church and then we're going to all go out and pick up garbage. I'm asking anybody with trailers to come out. Working with 4G Foundation, I'm working with Recology and so I've gotten quite a bit of positive support. I'm hoping to get, at the end of the event, we're going to have a barbecue out at Recology and I'm hoping to get the council out there along with the supervisors to support the program. Media is going to be involved. There's churches involved. So I'm really trying to create a movement where we as a community take pride in our community and we go out and make a change because the problem is really bad out in the countryside, if you're not aware. And I see this happening in a couple ways. We have t-shirts made up where everybody that goes out is going to be wearing a bright yellow shirt where people can see that the community is going, is taking action and doing things. Everywhere that something is cleaned up, there's going to be a little sign posted. And so you're going to start seeing these signs pop up all over the place that our county has cared and is doing something. So what I'm asking of you is to come out and support us if you can. I know everybody has a busy schedule, but this Saturday at noon at Recology, there's going to be a barbecue. And we're going to not only clean up the county, but if this movement gets going, like I hope it does, other areas I've found out since I've started putting this together, they have these kinds of programs. And so if we can, as a community, get this going, we can take on all kinds of projects in town, out in our county. And I just hope that I can see you all there. Another thing I was thinking about is, oh, each, each, each event is going to be sponsored by somebody else. One event might be sponsored by Recology, one event might be sponsored by the farm bureau, but every event's going to have like a social hour after, it's all completed, just so we can talk about what we've done, where we want to, where we want to go and participate. So, so hopefully this catches on throughout the whole community. And if, if the city would like to provide equipment such as trucks or anything to dump, that would be great too, because there's been a call put out for, for trailers and equipment and we've got people. So, and Recology is going to open up and just take everything that we can bring in. So we have a real good chance of cleaning up the county. So, any questions?
Through the mayor. Thank you so much for just doing, your family is just a family that gives so much to our community and I really appreciate that. What time are you starting the cleaning up on that Saturday, on this Saturday?
Yeah, this Saturday, we're meeting at the back parking lot at Hope Point and we're leaving at seven, or we're meeting at 7:30, we're going to leave at 8 o'clock.
8 o'clock. Okay, 7:30, 8 o'clock.
So we would love to see you all there.
I have been approached by several different churches that are not normally involved in English communities, non-English speaking, that want to do things as well. How, they wanted to do some cleaning within the city and so you're thinking, start the county and then kind of work your way in or how does that?
Yeah, well, the first event's going to be for the county and just hitting up the county, you know, just going out. And it's, it's going to depend on how many show up. You know, if we have 10 trailers show up, it can cover a lot more than three. So it just kind of depends on how many show up. Maybe 50 trailers show up. I'd love to see 50 or 100 trailers show up. But you know, it's, you know, we've talked to high school groups, we've talked to the scouts. There's all kinds of opportunities for, for all kinds of groups to get involved in this. It's just a, I envision it as a community thing, that it just takes off and we just do it monthly. But I do see during the period, there's also a lot we can be doing. You know, talking, I thought about like talking Hispanic radio, Punjabi radio and making our community aware and taking pride in, in the area, along with the English and everything else, reaching out to different areas to just to, because if we're wanting to bring business and we're wanting to. if we're wanting to bring business and we're wanting to bring tourist dollars, it's not gonna happen if, if we trash our counties. And that's where, you know, and as I drive out and almost daily, there's a mattress or a, uh, last rain, there was a boat show up in one of my fields and I'm sure it didn't float there. So, you know, it's, it's almost daily that it, it's like that. And, and it, it's very disturbing and it, you know, like I said, it, I, I was frustrated for a long time, then I just decided to do something positive. So, so this is what I'm attempting, so.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
And if you could provide any support, uh, in, in any way, that would be fantastic because it's all meant to help our community.
Jeff, uh, again, thank you for what you're doing. Uh, I personally have some conflicts. My boys play baseball on Saturday, but I would certainly like to help with some sponsorship, uh, whatever, whatever you need. So if you can give me your contact information.
Okay. Well, I'll leave, I've got some letters here that I've typed up with my contact and everything. If anybody would like a copy, I can just pass them out.
Yep, awesome. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. I think we have one more.
You got more comments?
Oh, questions or?
Yeah, Jeff, wanna thank you also. I have a commitment this Saturday already. I've already volunteered in for another project, but you can count me in for next month.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
We're all busy. I understand that and, you know, some, some months I'm not gonna be able to do it, but if we can get, get it going where every, every month a different group takes it, like a church or a, a club or, uh, you know, it can, it can be done by, by anyone.
All right, Jeff, thank you very much. Question for you real quick before you go. Do you, are folks who volunteer, they did bring their own trash bags or?
Uh, right now, they're just going into, uh, a trailer. We're talking big items that will be going into trailers and we're not talking trash on the road. So it's just big, big items. We're gonna need, we're gonna be needing muscles like, uh, refrigerator, stoves, mattresses, that kinda stuff. And I guess, I, you know, I haven't thought about it. Um, you know, there, there might be smaller items, but we have to watch out. We don't want things blowing out as we haul it over to Recology and everything.
Why I was asking about the bag?
Yeah, so that might be a good idea. I hadn't thought of that. That's a good idea, but gloves and shoes and everything like that, you're gonna need.
Very good. Thank you very much. Anybody else care to comment that might not have? Okay. We'll go on to appearance of interested citizens. I, members of the public may address the council on items and interests that are within the city's jurisdiction. Individuals addressing general comments may be encouraged to limit their statements to three minutes. I do have a card here from Philip Trainer.
This is my fifteenth year appearing before the council on exactly the same issue that I have had fifteen years ago. I bring up the issue on the pensions as to what can be done and what can't be done. I would ask the council if perhaps they could set up some kind of a program to where the citizens can be involved, together with the council and the city staff, to see if we can figure out some way to overcome the pension issue. The city have been in reasonably good financial shape, it seems like, and have been able to reduce or to send a check in to Pers for a portion of their unfunded liability. However, I think when Pers got that money, the unfunded liability number went up after you paid that. So no matter what you do, you can't send in enough money. So I would like to think that you go back, ask the city, ask the citizens, ask the city personnel to sit down and figure out, do something. In the past, it's always been, we can't do anything because Pers are doing this to us. We can't accept that anymore. We have to stand up on our own two feet and do something. I came here in two thousand and two, I came here in two thousand and four, and I've heard the same story from every council that have come before. And I've got no money in the game. I don't get a pension from the city, but I think that you have to look into the future to see what you're saddling your grandkids with and maybe your great-grandkids, because there's no way out unless you do something. Take the bull by the horns, try to set up a date. I would suggest you bring Pers up and ask them to tell us why they haven't done what we are paying them to do. After all, Pers is an employee of the city. However, Pers is allowed to tell you what to do. I thank you for your time and I hope that you don't have to come back next year, but I probably will. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Anybody else care to make a comment? All right. Onto the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time that council votes on the motion unless members of the city council, staff, or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Would anybody from the public like to speak on the item that's in the agenda? Just have one item with some minutes. All right, looking for action.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passed. Agenda item number eight is general items, or excuse me, no, that's been polled. Excuse me for that. Moving on to number nine, the affordable housing deferred loan of up to eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars with the Regional Housing Authority for a forty-unit development at the corner of Garden Highway and Miles Avenue presented by Darren Gale. And, um, refresh my memory, do we, we prefer public comment on this item now or after staff speaks?
After staff speaks.
Thank you very much. Welcome, Darren.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. It's a pleasure to be before you to speak about a, uh, housing, uh, project. Uh, in September, October, uh, last year, the city council held a, a special workshop and talked about a housing strategy. Uh, a pill Democrat wrote a story about that and then, uh, I believe in November, the council adopted a five-year housing strategy. Um, we'd been talking with a couple residential developers as we continue to do, but the first phone call that I received after that article was from Gus, uh, mentioning that he had read the article, Gus being the executive director of our Regional Housing Authority, and talking about a project that they were proposing and that they, that he hoped that, uh, as the council was discussing residential housing, that they were discussing all types and all forms of residential housing. Uh, myself and, and the city manager sat down, uh, with Mr. Becerra and he talked about a request for a, uh, deferred loan, um, on a project that they are proposing for the corner of Garden Highway and Miles. Uh, this is the location, uh, it's where the former, uh, corporate offices of, of the Regional Housing Authority, uh, were located and, uh, they're proposing a, uh, approximately forty unit project that'll be heard by the Planning Commission on the twenty-seventh. Uh, the reason why this is time-sensitive is they are looking to apply for a nine percent tax credit, uh, and that application is due on March fourth. And, uh, one of the items that they believe will make them, uh, competitive for this project is demonstrating, uh, um, a variety of different funding sources and participation from a variety of different groups, including the local governments. Uh, they have asked for a, a loan up to eight hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, the loan is a, uh, is what's called a deferred loan to be paid back, uh, using residual, uh, revenue. Uh, so that's, you know, revenue after all other expenses have been paid. It's a three percent simple interest loan, uh, for fifty-five years. In order to, uh, assist them in their project, this has to be defined as a loan and not a gift from the local agency. Uh, there is a couple pots of, of money that the council, if you wanted to, uh, um, approve, the city manager signing a letter. Uh, one was the low mod housing asset fund, which there's just a little under a million dollars currently in. And the second one is there's our homes to family capital and maintenance account, uh, which the former redevelopment agency purchased homes. And, uh, since that time, a few of those homes have been sold and there's not a need to hold on to the total, uh, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand that's, uh, that is in that account. Um, so, um, and then also, uh, the city council could consider, um, doing a loan as relates to, uh, impact fees or, uh, water and sewer connections. Uh, staff is recommending, uh, that, uh, that, the, the low mod housing asset fund and the homes to family capital maintenance fund, uh, be used. Uh, this is a rendering that, uh, the applicant has provided for this project that'll be considered by the Planning Commission. Um, and I can answer any questions that you might have. Also, I know Gus is here and would like to speak on this project and would like to answer, uh, any questions that the council has. Thanks. Gus, you wanna come up?
Gus, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Be happy to entertain any questions. Uh, we're proud of this project. We've been working on it for a couple of years now. It's been a collaborative effort, but, uh, from, from the county, actually both counties, it's turned into a regional project. So both Yuba County and Sutter County, as you know, have committed, uh, a little over two-point-six million dollars in, in, uh, housing money that they, that they have in their coffers for the project. Um, we, we have a, um, an application pending with the local homeless consortium for, uh, some additional housing dollars as well. Uh, we, we have a meeting with them tomorrow to review our, our application and, uh, as, uh, Mr. Gale mentioned, located on the corner of, uh, Garden Highway and, uh, Miles where Percy and, uh, Percy and Miles there, uh, intersect and change names. Uh, and that is correct, that's the side of our old office, that's a boarded up building that, as you know, is there now that we'd like to, uh, demolish someday and build a, uh, a, a nice development for our community. We, uh, the financial commitments from, from Sutter and Yuba County come with supportive services for the, our target population. And that's an important, that's a very important piece of, of this, of this project because, um, the, the target population is, 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 is a high-risk population, uh, but those supportive services that come with it, they come with a, a, a fifteen-year commitment of supportive services for our residents. And so, um, we, we currently have, uh, two other properties that have supportive services as well that we own and manage. One is, one is here in the city of Yuba City and one is also in, uh, the city of Marysville. Uh, and, and same kinda relationship with, uh, the behavioral health department and county, um, health and human services where the residents live there and, and receive wraparound supportive services from, from, uh, these agencies such as case management, uh, you know, counseling, uh, psychiatry, therapy of any type. So, uh, we're not service providers, we're, we're housers as we call ourselves, but, uh, uh, those two properties, uh, the Yuba City one has been around since, uh, two thousand and eight and the Marysville, uh, property's been around, um, probably going on six or seven years now. Uh, uh, great properties with, uh, uh, little to no issues and, um, uh, we'd be happy to, um, offer you a tour if you'd like to see those someday as well. Um, but, um, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
A couple of questions, Gus. The folks who move in, what's the, what is the target population?
The target population is, um, is, is homeless and, and homeless with mental disabilities.
All right, and then with the wraparound services that would, that would take place at the site?
Uh, yes, both, uh, both onsite or offsite. We are providing in our, uh, community room space, uh, two offices for case management for the service providers, uh, uh, to have office space and counseling rooms for.
That was my next question, is there's a community space there for that?
Yes, there are multi-purpose rooms, uh, small kitchen, uh, I think a computer lab.
All right. And then the folks who live there, who are they writing their rent check to?
Uh, to the ownership structure, to, to the owners.
So there will be private owners then?
No, so, so the ownership will be comprised of a limited partnership that will be comprised of, of a nonprofit affiliate of ours as well as the limited partner. So if we're successful in, in, uh, being awarded low-income housing tax credits, those tax credits are then, uh, sold to an investor who kicks in the equity into the deal. Uh, that, uh, that investor, it's typically a bank or an insurance company is, are, are, those are your, your, but, your most common, uh, purchasers of low-income housing tax credits. And so their entity, as long as, uh, as well as the nonprofit entity, um, uh, forms a limited partnership, which becomes the owner of the property. So the Regional Housing Authority itself as an entity is not, will not be on title.
All right. So it's a, a group of folks, of investors coming together.
Correct.
So wouldn't, wouldn't be contributing to funding the profit of a private individual or private group then?
Well, it is private money that comes in from, from, from the, the investor, so, um, and it's the lion's share of the money, you know, our, our performa, our projections are at about eleven, eleven and a half million dollars out the door, hard costs and soft costs. And the low-income housing tax credit investor, uh, would be coming in at about seven and a half, eight million.
Okay.
So it's the lion's share.
And you'd mentioned the, the county contributing, Sutter and Yuba.
Correct.
Um, did they, is that the supportive services that they're contributing to this? Is that what their financial contribution is or is it, does it consist of only that or they all just putting in money?
No, it's both. It's, uh, the supportive services and also, uh, about two-point-six million dollars in, in, in ca, cash.
Between the two?
Yeah, uh, no, in addition to. So the supportive services, uh, I think they're budgeting annually, it's about four-hundred thousand dollars a year in supportive services. In addition to the four-hundred, they're committing to, they, they have committed two-point-six million dollars in housing money.
And that's between the two counties or each?
Oh, good question. Thank you. Uh, that is between the two counties.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Um, I think that's all I have. Anybody else?
The, first off, I, I think it's, uh, a good project to try to get, um, this target audience some housing, but I do have some questions.
Yes, sir.
Uh, forty-unit complex, fourteen parking spaces, that concerns me. Um, it was originally proposed to this council through the Planning Commission notes, this was for a senior housing complex and the assumptions, at least in that Planning Commission staff report, led me to believe that this, that parking, uh, space allotment was based upon seniors. This is now something different than that. Do those same assumptions apply to low income and to, uh, the two homeless?
So, uh, the, I believe the, well, Mr. Gale can answer that, but I, I believe that it was a typo on the staff report for the.
It wasn't a typo. I, I, it was, it went on and on inside the staff report, talking about senior housing.
And I believe that's why it was rescheduled for transparency for next week's Planning Commission meeting. But to answer your parking question, so in, in our experience, uh, of support with the two supportive housing projects that we already, uh, are affiliated with and also, um, uh, touring, just other projects that we've seen in, in, in other cities, um, uh, the, the target population own, uh, little to no vehicles. And so the, the one in Yuba City that we have now, uh, the residents, uh, there's not one resident that owns a vehicle, they rely on public transportation. The one in Marysville, uh, I believe one resident owns a vehicle. And so from our experience, the parking, uh, uh, ratio that, that has been requested is, is for that very purpose, to maximize, uh, units, uh, for, for that very reason. Um, and on our senior projects, we try to go with about a point-five to point-seven ratio. Um, I, I believe the fourteen spaces that you're referring to, Councilmember Boomgarden, are in, on the property, but there's also, I think, uh, we are.
Five offsite as well.
Some offsites, correct, as well, yeah. But in our experience, you know, to wrap up your question, is, is, there's very little space that's needed for parking, uh, and so, um, we'd like to maximize the number of units that we can put in there.
Okay. Um, is, with this project, and maybe Mr. Gale will have to address this, was this project going to, uh, encourage either facilities district fees or, or impact fees in regards to the burden it's gonna place on police and fire?
So, yes, we are subject to the, uh, community, uh, facility district fees and we were informed of that, uh, about six, seven months ago from, by the city. So we, we are aware of that and we've plugged that into our, our operating budget projections. Uh, and then, uh, to your second question, develop, they are, they are subject to development impact fees.
Okay. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Through the mayor, I've got, uh, several questions for you here, piggybacking off of the, uh, parking, uh, scenario. You talk about supportive services.
Yes, sir.
How many of the fourteen spaces is supportive services going to consume at this site?
Uh, so in our dialogue with, uh, uh, behavioral health and health and human services, they don't anticipate having more than two or three vehicles there at any given time maximum.
Okay. Um, continuing along with this project, um, who is going to be ultimately responsible for the maintenance and the upkeep of this facility?
The ownership structure and they will, uh, have a third-party property management firm, uh, uh, who will be under contract to manage the property, maintenance and leasing activities.
Okay. Um, a little bit further down the line on this project, as Mr. Gale stipulated, he used the word gift, it had to be a loan. Cut to the chase, what are you really looking for here? Cut to the chase, what are you really looking for here? A gift disguised as a loan? Or is this truly a loan? Because I've read all the staff reports, it's paid on net revenues, net revenues is going to be zero. So we're not looking really to ever get paid back even at 55 years and 3%. So forget the legalese, what are you looking for, a loan or a gift?
To cut to the chase, the funding sources do require that these dollars be structured as a loan. So that is a requirement. If not, then we would come after the grant. It's just simpler, right? And you are correct, affordable housing properties, for the most part, don't generate a whole lot of cash. The funding sources that we're projecting to use for this property require annual deposits into reserve accounts for capital improvements and any operating deficits. So, and because the rents, as you all know, are affordable, they don't generate a whole lot of cash. So to cut to the chase, jurisdictions who invest in affordable housing are looking for affordability. They're not looking for payment back on the loan. And so that is, I mean, you are correct, Councilmember Shaw, that the repayments from residual receipts will be very small. And it's truly to seek affordability for units in our community.
Okay.
You are correct.
The questions I have, because we have to be very prudent with the resources that the city's entrusted us with.
Of course.
So we're going into a 55-year note with the Regional Housing Authority. You're responsible for paying that back over 55 years, even though you're going to sell the property? Or do we attach the property to the new, the loan to the new owner of the property? How is the city going to get paid back any at all?
So one of the options that the city can do is, we've structured deals in two separate ways with other cities or counties. And one way is where the jurisdiction makes the loan directly to the housing authority and then we turn around and just become a borrower and a lender all at the same time. Or the jurisdiction can make the loan directly to the partnership, to the limited partnership, and then, you know, basically bypass us, so to speak. And it just, it actually cuts down on a lot of administrative work for everybody that way. So that is an option that the city has, you know, with your, with whatever funds the city loans.
I have some more questions for yourself, but Mr. Gale, you would probably be able to answer this for me. The low mod housing fund that we've basically got a million dollars in, what can those funds be exactly used for?
They can only be used for affordable housing projects. Low mod, moderate being 80% or lower. Is it 80 to 120? Sorry, 80, so moderate is 80 to 120% of the median income. Low is below the 80%.
And the other fund, what can it be used for?
The exact same.
Okay. So basically, we've got 1.4 million available that can only be used for, between the two funds, for low-income housing.
Correct. And of that 400,000 that's in the homes to family, the rest would remain there for the homes that the city purchased, that the housing authority is managing. There's still, how many homes?
Twelve or 13.
There's 12 or 13 homes. So that money is set aside for any type of future maintenance on those homes. So we would not, if you wanted to change the allocations, we would not encourage taking more out of the homes to family because that money needs to be set aside for capital maintenance of those 12 properties.
Okay. So all those properties, because I'm leading into an ultimate question, I'm going to find out here the answer to, but with this, the regional housing is managing properties for the city, but we're responsible for the maintenance, but yet on this property here, we're not going to be responsible for the maintenance. The private party would be responsible for the maintenance, correct?
Correct. And the housing authority is actually responsible for the maintenance of those properties.
Okay. Do we have any of those properties right now that are subject to needing repairs that would be coming out of this 1.4 million?
That'll be a question for the managers of those properties. We keep up, Councilmember Shaw, on all of our capital improvements and needs to our properties. So I think for the most part, the properties that we manage for you at this time are up to speed with their capital needs.
Okay. I would like to clarify and know what these properties are. I did my homework, Mr. Mayor, and went on to the website for the RHA. Do you realize that your prior certified audit is not up for public view?
Our 2018?
2018 is not on your website.
No, it is on there.
It is not.
I just saw it today.
It may have just went up today. I was there Sunday night, it was not there.
Okay.
Okay? Likewise, I looked at your 2017 and there was concerns of cash flow, deficit spending from RHA. This is a warm, fuzzy, good feel it needs for the community, but we have to ensure we're doing the right thing for the community. And that's the reason I asked, is this a loan or a gift? And there was also mentioned all the way through your minutes for the year that there's properties that need roofs and things that you can't afford to replace. And that's the reason I asked Mr. Gale if this money needs to come from our 1.4. Because if it's properties that the city is responsible for, then we need to be taking care of those.
I know those are not those properties, sir.
Okay. Can you give me the financial condition of RHA truthfully? Because I know also in your minutes that as of October, HUD has started requesting your financials on a monthly basis.
Right.
I would like to know that as well, because we're lending you potentially $850,000.
And HUD has backed off of that. They now request them quarterly, which has been our practice since I've been working for that agency. We had a compliance review from our HUD field office in May of last year. We performed exemplary well. We were giving, were given really high marks. And their request for monthlies was because they told us that that's the practice of other housing authorities and what they expect of other housing authorities. We demonstrated that we are in good financial shape, truthfully. And they backed off on that, and now they request quarterlies. And so those are the same reports that go to our board. Our capital reserve accounts are the highest they've ever been on all of our properties. We were just awarded by HUD the fiscal year 2019 Public Housing Program of the Year. We are a high performer in our public housing program as well. We're a high performer in our Housing Choice voucher program. You know, we wouldn't be receiving these awards and accolades if we were in trouble. So, you know, I'd be happy to, you know, answer any questions that are more specific, you know, maybe with our CFO if you'd like offline, but we're in great shape. We, I think it's the best financial shape that we've been in since I've been working for this agency.
Okay. Thank you for those comments. I would just like to make sure the council understands that whatever decision we make here, we're realistically looking at a gift disguised as a loan. It's a good, warm project that needs to be done in our community. But at the same time, we would be committing potentially 850,000 of our reserves that could possibly be used for other homeless projects that I know the county has proposed, other things that they might be looking for funding for as well. And I appreciate what you said, but, you know, I would, I know that the minutes reflect some different things up until current, so I just would say exercise caution and think of the future. The balance between warm, fuzzy thoughts and good things needed plus prudent use of our 850,000.
I have a question. Through the mayor, Gus, and maybe this is for our staff. If we did not fund this loan, are there other competing projects? Or were there other competing projects? Or could there be other competing projects for use of these funds? Just help me understand that.
So currently, we have no specific development project that's looking for affordable housing funds. We have one other project in town that is applying for a tax credit. They're not asking for any funds from the city. The only reason we know that is we have to sign off on a zoning clearance. So I received that email just the other day. Off the top of my head, I don't remember the location. The other one is, the county is looking at a homeless shelter. What they've told us as we've sat through the meeting is they're really concerned about funding as it relates to services, that they believe that there's a lot of grants out there that will help them build it. That being said, as Councilmember Shaw brings up, you have a very small amount of money for affordable housing projects. This is one that's currently being proposed. At one time, the city was looking at a street called East Crest that's down off of Lincoln. I would say it's one of our worst streets in town. Luckily, it's just a court and hasn't, like, spilled over. And we've determined at the staff level, there just wasn't the funding to really try to improve that whole, that whole street. And when this project came forward, we said we would bring it to the city council for consideration.
Thanks. One other question, I know that this, and just help me understand procedurally, we could conceivably follow staff's recommendation tonight, and then as this goes to the Planning Commission in a couple of weeks, they could amend it, they could change it, they could do a lot of different things to that project. Are we approving something ahead of, I guess the timeline's confusing to me, is that perhaps we should wait until the Planning Commission receives this, this particular project approves it, and then deal with it? I know this council's always, at least they have in the past, claimed that we could convene quickly if needed to facilitate the grant, the application for the tax credits. But it just seems to me that the Planning Commission would be weighing in on this, you know, making their decisions, and then the loan would be, or could be conceivably approved at that time?
Absolutely. The Planning Commission could deny the project. And so if the council approved it tonight, obviously would request that it be contingent upon the council's or the Planning Commission's consideration. But the council, if you'd like, this, if you want to have a special meeting after the Planning Commission has taken a consideration on the 27th. The only issue for the applicant is just that their application is due on March 4th. So if the council was to push this off until after the Planning Commission consideration, we would need to make sure that it occurred before the 4th to help them during this application process. That being said, there's another application process in, if you don't succeed in March, when's the next application? So July. There's a series of these. So this is for them to apply for the March. But yes, the council could, if you would like, you know, make this contingent or push it off until after the Planning Commission meets on the 27th.
Thank you. Follow-up through the mayor. The project was listed that even if we moved it through tonight, it made it through planning construction, it the earliest would not start till December. If it was moved to the second phase of the tax credit application in July, would that hinder the December timeframe? Because that's an awful long time in construction.
That would only be if they're successful for this March application. That I'm...
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Through the mayor, the money that we're discussing, this is the taxpayers' money that contributed this to us, correct, Darren?
That is correct.
This isn't the city's money, this is the taxpayers' money that contributed this.
And... These are funds from the former redevelopment agency that were set aside as a requirement.
Right. So it was given to us from the state. It wasn't, we didn't earn it, it was given to us to use as a process. Anyway, we have an issue with the homeless in our community. And this is the first step of curing something in our community. And it, you know, the city didn't earn, we didn't earn this money, it was given to us to spread to something that's going to help us in the future. And myself personally, I'm on the Regional Housing Board, and I've been with this project for the last couple of years with Gus. And this is going to be a great thing for our community. And we could put, we could approve this on continuance that the Planning Commission approves this also, so we don't have to have a second meeting. This could be all brought to us and it could be done tonight. The Planning Commission approves it next Wednesday night, it's a done deal, and this will help us get this project, help us get this project going. Like I said, and we have a wonderful finance director for the Regional Housing Board, and Gus didn't mention this, but she has paid off a few loans. People have given us, have given them money to do projects on the Regional Housing Authority, and she paid them off. And she paid them off years earlier, there was a 10-year contract and she paid it off in seven. So we do have wonderful people working for the Housing Board, and this will be a great thing for our community. It's only 40 units, so it's a start. If there's zero out there, we still have 200 people in the river bottoms, we're in our community. If we build this, they're in a home, it's better for our community. So that's just my thoughts. And my thoughts, we need to go forward with this, and like I said, put in conditions that the Planning Commission approves this, we don't have to have a second meeting, it'll go forward, and hopefully the, we can get the grant money and also to continue us on so this could be built and start the building this year and not wait another two years. Thank you.
All right, Darren. We have one pot of money with roughly 1 million, one pot of money with roughly 400,000. You're recommending we not tap into the 400,000 to keep that reserved for the repairs of the homes?
We're recommending that you take 200,000 out of...
Half of that.
The 400, yeah. So it leaves them about 236,000.
All right. And then the money, I know, would it be this money eligible to contribute towards the homeless population directly, like a shelter of some sort, or not qualified to be used for that? Does it have to be housing itself?
Has to be some type of housing, permanent housing.
All right. So permanent housing.
You know, and actually, I shouldn't say permanent, just some type of housing.
Some type of housing.
Yeah. I could go back if you had ideas and to look in to see if it met the specific requirements of what the council is asking.
Okay. What I was thinking was if this money, if we were asked at some point to help financially with the Sutter County homeless shelter, if we would be taking money that we could be used for that towards this, is that the same pot of money from which we draw?
For the actual construction and building of a facility, yes. However, what they've told us in the past is what they're looking for funding is for the supportive services, that they believe that they'll be able to fund it through grants, the actual construction of the facility.
Have they given you a number by chance?
They have not.
They have not. All right. And then, let's see, the, I mean, we all support affordable housing, I mean, big time. Would, and as an added benefit, would we be eligible as a city for additional and future grants if we are on record as having participated in supporting this project?
Not that I'm aware of. What this helps you do, though, is to leverage a possible 7.5 to 8 million dollar tax credit financing for this project, which they don't believe would be as competitive if they didn't receive the funding or might not financially be feasible.
So an investment of up to 850 will help leverage 7 to 8 million?
Correct.
All right.
On top of the 2.5 million that the two counties are kicking in in addition. So speaking of leverage, this is an example of leveraging those dollars. You know, for every dollar you're putting in, you're getting another 10.
Right. Okay. That's a very good point. And we have 40 units, which would be, you know, I don't know how many people they can accommodate, but we're definitely going to house more than 40 of those 200-ish people that are living in the river bottoms. So that's a good point, too. And then who came up with the 3% at 55 years? Or not who, but how did we come up with that? I mean, that's a very good way to disguise a grant. Because it's, you know, especially if it's contingent on the ability to pay back, I don't even know if there's a minimum payment.
There's not.
Yeah, see.
So that 55 years, 3% comes from the low income...
From the tax credit allocation.
The tax credit allocation committee.
So that's the standard, the 3% of 55? Okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. I think that's all my questions. Anybody have anything else?
Through the mayor, I wanted to, Mr. Gale, I want to clarify on the funding that you're noting here, the low moderate housing asset fund.
Yes.
And the housing to families capital maintenance account. The housing that you mentioned, potential development on, what is it, Lybock Boulevard, right, Sutter County?
Yes.
And that is a temporary shelter?
Yes.
Correct? So there is no actual facility or house or building structure?
I would say to date, to date, they've not finalized anything. It's been everything from tough sheds to tents to buildings. So I could speculate, most recently, they've said it's going to be tough sheds. And a lot of the expenses is related to preparing the site, grading, drainage, site improvements that would need to be done prior to installing any type of building.
And these funds would not be allowable to use for that type of development?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. Let's make the assumption that they are.
Let's make the assumption that they're not.
We'll make the assumption that they're not.
Because I can clearly look at the low moderate housing asset fund, it's the word, you know, I've been doing housing for homeless for many, many years, as you're aware. So I think as a council, we need to be clear that these funds are specifically for what area of servicing homeless. If it is only allowable for development of a structure or facility, then we need to be clear on that. I do not, I would hope that our fellow council members would not be misinformed that the potential of these funds could be utilized for temporary shelter when in truth, it could not. And in that, it would mean... And in that, it would mean that Sutter County may have a whole other, within the regional housing, may have a whole other plan. My information of working with the regional housing and within the homeless consortium is that they are the people that develop and build houses, along with Habitat for Rec. Money. Those are the two major groups within the consortium. So for this particular development, Gus, I have a question on the support services with that.
Yes.
So within the support services, that is coming directly from social, from public entities of social services? Or is that also, is that through the coordinated entry or is that through Adventist Health? How is that going to be?
It's through Sutter Yuba Behavioral Health Department.
Because of the funding that they get through the Mental Health Services Act, correct?
Correct.
So they're funding it under that. And the No Place Like Home is actually, is that federal funding?
State.
State, but federal ties to that one, no?
No, I believe it's all state.
Okay. So that, those are required exactly for housing, correct?
They're only for housing.
Only for housing. So these grants are requiring loans in order to demonstrate the community has a long-term investment. Is that a fair statement?
I would say that is a fair statement, Councilwoman.
So I, I'm just, I think the clarity that needs to happen, Mr. Gail, is that we need to know exactly that these funds, I'm not familiar all the way through, but I believe that these are specifically for development or capital. You wouldn't have put them in capital or maintenance account if they wouldn't be used in those kinds of possible options. Or Low Moderate Housing Asset Fund, if you're utilizing the, what is it, 80 to 100%, 120% low-income poverty, that requirement is specifically for housing, correct?
I cannot answer the question specifically if it'd be, if what the county is proposing as a temporary shelter, if, if the low mod can or cannot be used for that project?
It is not, it cannot.
I do, I, I cannot, I do not know the answer to that question.
I know the answer.
But I trust you.
Yes. It cannot. So at this point, the, the need for this is to meet the guideline, the timeline for March. And so looking at the entire project, it looks like a worthy project on my view. And then it looks like this could be something processed and then if any changes with our Planning Commission, we can come back if that needs to be. But I have no other questions.
And Councilwoman, just to, real quick on the capital and maintenance account fund. So when the city purchased these homes under Homes to Family, we entered into an actual agreement with the housing agency, what dictates that they need to set aside a certain portion of their monthly rents to go into the capital and maintenance account. The only reason we're requesting or, or recommending that you remove some of the dollars out of there is because we've sold a number of those homes over the last couple of years. And there's not that full need, obviously, to have 438,000. And we talked with the housing authority and they agreed that reducing it by 200,000 still meets their needs, their ongoing needs for the existing buildings that, that they have.
I appreciate that. So are these houses, the 12 to 13 houses, were these financed through the city?
Yes, they were purchased with low mod affordable housing dollars.
Exactly.
And the reason why we, the city started doing that is we didn't have an affordable housing project to invest in. And they're, you know, looking for the most affordable way to purchase properties.
And did some of these owners or, yeah, owners of the properties fail to meet their payments and why were there sell-offs in these residents?
I do not know why we sold off the residents. I know a couple of them were on Bridge Street for the widening. Is that correct?
Yeah, several of the homes were on the north side of Bridge Street. And so as tenants moved out and they became vacant, we purchased them with road funds to be used for the future widening of Bridge Street. And then I believe a couple of the homes, after the tenants moved out, it was just the staff decided to go ahead and sell those off because the market was good and to get out of the business of owning homes.
Good idea. Yeah, that's what I thought. I, I remember the fact that the city had very, a very small footprint in low-income moderate housing. And that's how the city was doing that, by purchasing these homes. And so now we're trying to expand. It seems to me, based on this potential grant, that between the 12 to 13 homes that we have now, we could additionally perhaps have 40 additional residents for low-income moderate housing and additionally without some mental health cases. That's, and a way to be able to final, to finance this. Is that fair enough?
Yep.
Thank you.
Through the mayor, Mr. Gail, further clarification on these two pots of money.
Yes.
The low mod is only brand-new construction, correct? That's all that we can use it for? Can we use that to buy other properties and redevelop it and turn it into low-income housing?
Yes.
Okay. And then the cap maintenance can be used for either or as well?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Other examples of projects is maybe a local apartment owner comes forward and says, hey, we want to make our project deed restricted 55 years as an affordable housing project. However, we need to put in $50,000 per unit to make them come up to standard. That's another type of project that could come forward that you could use those funds for.
Through the mayor, yes, that's exactly what I was talking about. If a project like an apartment complex came up, the city could use either of these funds because it's existing building to turn it into affordable housing.
Correct. And, and what's required there is some type of deed restriction. Just like on the homes that we purchased, they were restricted for affordable housing use. We can't just give it to the homeowner and say, oh yeah, we trust you, right? The property owner, it's a deed restricted.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So one more thing. We have 1.4, really 1.2 if we go by the recommendation. $850,000 of that seems to be a big chunk, a high percentage. Admittedly, a little beyond my comfort level in case we want to do something else or when we want to do something else. Is, is the project, is, say just worst-case scenario, we denied, is the project still going to be able to go forward? No?
Mr. Mayor, the, the request for the 850 was because of a financial gap that we have in developing the project.
How big is that gap, Gus?
850.
Exactly the same amount?
Correct. And then, and that's, you know, why, why we came to the city. But, but it's up, I think why your staff report says up to 850 is because we have a pending application with the consortium, the homeless consortium for, is that 450, 450,000? Which they haven't announced official awards yet. So let's assume that the consortium awarded us the 450, then our request to the city would not be 850, it'd be 400.
Okay. I'm glad I asked. So we perhaps can consider 500 or we have to, we can wait and see what they get awarded from the, I'm sorry, who's else? Do you have the homeless consortium?
Yes.
We can see how much they add, they contribute. Or perhaps we can even consider giving them a reduced amount with that contingency and consider a reduction in impact fees. That would have an impact on it as well. Just a suggestion for our discussion.
Through the mayor, no, I, I agree with you. Thank you for asking that question. That is valuable too. If that was the case, if there was a, you know, if you're, if perhaps if you were to receive the 450 from the consortium, then the 400,000 or whatever we agreed to, up to, right? You would still be able to
Correct.
accomplish what you're trying to do.
Correct.
To, to my familiarity with building for homeless projects throughout the state and the nation, it is extremely expensive to do this and it's very difficult to establish. So if we were to say, Mayor, that we kept, you know, we don't want to spend a million dollars, we're going to keep our million dollars and not play, we're not going to be able to do anything besides probably do some subsidies, well, we couldn't because the monies are restricted in certain ways. This is a, I think, a good effort to move us in the right direction. The other regional housing is working on some strategies that I think will help with what the Sutter County is trying to do on Live Oak Boulevard. I like your idea of if it were to, if they were receiving the 450,000, we will go up to the 400, we're, we're in a better shape.
Do you know when the consortium is going to reward this money?
What's that?
Do we know when the consortium is going to reward this money?
I don't know.
So I spoke with Scott Thurman today. He told me that once they speak with each one of the applicants personally, that they'll do some type of, of announcement. They're having a meeting tomorrow with Brenda Stranix as a representative from the Yuba Sutter Homeless Consortium. And it's my understanding that she will be informing the housing authority of how much, if any, they will receive from HEAP funds. On top of that, I would just say in the last 10 years since I've been at the city, I only know one affordable housing project that's been proposed in the city and been built. And that's up, there's an apartment project on the north side of Highway 20 on Plumas Boulevard. That is the last and only apartment project, let alone affordable housing, a project in our city. One of the reasons is we have to compete with Los Angeles. If you've noticed, Thousand Authorities had some development in Live Oaks, Winters, is that Williams? Obviously, they don't have the same group of people that we're trying to compete with. And, and I'll go back, I think the total project's $11 million. So you're getting more than, you know, 10 bucks back if the council was to approve it. If you're trying to look to leverage your dollar, that's a pretty good leverage. As Councilmember Espinola mentioned, you know, you, you need to have a significant amount of money to be able to incentivize projects. This is one of them and it's one of the reasons why we said, hey, let's get this to council as quickly as we can.
Mr. Mayor, I would be in agreement with yourself as far as, we've got to have prudent use of our funds. It's a great project, but it's how do we spend 1.4 million? Do we put three-quarters of it into one project? Therefore, I would move tonight that we authorize the city manager to sign a commitment letter of a deferred loan to the Regional Housing Authority for the New Haven Project in an amount not to exceed 400,000 from the low mod housing fund. And we could always come back and arrest things at a special meeting if need to, but I'm comfortable with 400.
All right, I've got...
Through the mayor?
Okay.
When you're done, I'll let you go first, I'm sorry.
I've got one question and I've got one comment, a request next to me and now two.
One question, yeah.
All right. For 40 units, what are we looking at receiving in the way of impact fees? Or do you know a rough number, Darren?
Approximately 1.4 million? Is that what the project was? 1.35 million in impact fees and, and I'm also including water and connection fees.
Yeah. That includes that?
Yeah. So I don't know exactly what's the breakdown between impact fees and connection fees.
All right. Okay. Comment. CFD fees per unit?
CFD is annual assessment of $310 a, a, a unit. This would be the first apartment project in the city to be, that would have to pay that fee.
There have been others that have been proposed that would have to pay that fee.
All future, yeah. So, so they're the first project to come forward since the council has actually adopted the CFD. So they're the first one that's been impacted by it.
So that's another 12, 4 a year on fees that they would be paying. Okay.
But there's a use for those fees.
Those are there to accommodate.
Right. It'd be for police and fire and so on and so forth. I, I'm, I disagree with Councilman Shaw. I think we should do the 850 and then if the count, and then if the consortium gives them money, we'll get back, we'll get back paid. Now, I mean, that's promise, that this way they can move forward, they can get this project going and we can help the homeless and help cure the homeless situation that the community is in today. So and then if they, what I'm saying, they only get 200,000. I mean, and this money, so we've got 1.4 million. It's been sitting there for how long? We haven't done nothing. We have a great project coming up. Yes, it's three-quarters of the amount of money, but there's nothing in front of us, nothing's asked in front of us, there's nothing in the books, there's nothing on the horizon for somebody to ask us for some money to build some affordable housing. So this is a great chance for our community to step up and help a worthy cause. And like I said, we do the 850 on conditions that the Planning Commission approves this next Wednesday night. And then if we get the 400 back from the consortium, we're only down 450,000 instead of 850,000.
Okay. Trying to figure out procedurally how we go about this. What I'm going to do now, you have one more thing, Councilmember Shaw?
I was just going to help guide you, sir, if you would like it.
Well, I'm good. I know what, what I'm going to do now is I'm going to, I have something to say before we vote. But I'll open up for public comment if any. Yes, ma'am. Yes, sirs. Line up, go for it.
Pat Miller, President, Sutter County Taxpayers Association. I disagree with the 850,000. If you give them that, they're going to take it. If you give them 400, they would have more incentive to come up with the 450. You know, don't give it to them upfront when there's a good possibility that you can entice them to, to come forward with the 450. So.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nikki. I live at 549 Glint Way in Ubersity. I just wanted to point out that this housing project is beautiful and I hope that I qualify for low-income housing because this is a nicer place than I live and I work really hard for my money. I'd also like to know how you know that the homeless will use them because we have talked to some homeless people and from what we hear is that they don't want to live in our housing. They want to stay in their little communities that they're in. A lot of them have background problems, criminal records, drug addiction, those type of things. They don't want to come out into public facilities like this because they're afraid of, you know, getting backtracked. So I don't think they will use them. If they do, I think they will maybe use them during the winter when it's cold and they need some sort of housing. But what happens in the summer when they all move out, because it's perfectly acceptable to live by the river bottoms these days. I think Councilmember Shaw has brought up some really good red flags that I think you guys should take a little more time to talk about and consider before voting on moving forward. With all this money, is there a cheaper way you could build something similar that is not like the Taj Mahal for complexes? That we can maybe save some money in that department, but still give people a building and some rooms? And I'd like to know who they're going to use to build. Are they using local companies from our area and providing jobs, you know, in our area since they're going to be building for our area? I think that they should give back to the community in that way and use local contractors and local people. I want to know if these places have a kitchen? Do they cook their own food? Are they still going to be leaving their nice apartments to come steal from my fiance's business and bring stuff back to their apartment now that they have somewhere to hide it? Councilmember Carlos? You said that nobody has asked or brought other opinions forward asking for money. I was wondering if, do you have to come ask for your money to get something moving to deal with this homeless problem? Or can you guys just see a need and go after yourselves? Or do you just sit and wait for somebody to come give you money? Because you could be waiting all day instead of just seeing the need and figuring something out and acting on that yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thomas Burns, 1885 Green Gate Street. I do want to say that, to the vice mayor, that the city doesn't earn any money. Neither, no, no government entity earns any money. Okay? It's all taken from the people. And I am, I was going to skip this meeting, but I'm glad I came tonight to see the, the sham action and how, how, how they run this program. It's disgusting to me. And I don't want to drive by this welfare skyscraper every day when I go to work because I earned my, my keep. And I'm totally opposed to the project, 100%, 1,000%. I like everything Nikki had to say too. But how about working for a living? You know what I mean? That's what most of us do. I'm tired of this nanny state program. That's all I got to say about it. I mean, I've got plenty more to say, but that's it. I mean, I've got plenty more to say, but that's it for now.
Thank you, sir.
Vince Burns, and I live at 549 Clintway with that beautiful blonde right there. And I came here tonight because I read in the newspaper, and you guys probably have seen me, I've been coming a lot. And I came here tonight because I was like 55-year loan, that's 3%. Man, that's a, a good loan, man. I'll take that, too, if you guys are handing it out. So to find out that it's not really a loan is kind of nice to hear. I would like to see that money come back to the city. Any kind of loan we get out, I'd like to see it come back. I understand how, by listening to the suit, that we are getting, like, putting out a million, getting the money back, gaining a 10 million, 11 million dollar project, I understand that now. But I don't, if I could ask a few questions to this gentleman, I can't remember his name. He said that their capital or their funds are the highest they've ever been. What are they at? How come they don't pony up the 850 or 400,000? And, you know, because if their capital money's good, well, they loan themselves, they might get it back at a 3% 55-year loan. And I read in the newspaper that also that it is 40 units for, but I think it said a common kitchen area, if I recall? And is, so the units don't have any kind of kitchen in them, or is it just bed and bath? And it is extremely nice, I will say that. And I've worked on a lot of projects like this with low-income housing. I did the, one of the phases in Richland Housing. And I worked with, I worked with a guy named Vicente, who works for Sun Suri in construction, and they build many, many units like this. He was telling me just a week, weeks ago, and I'd like to get more time to clarify it, but they built one of these in Sacramento, and then he went back to visit it, and he said, where's everyone at? And there was nobody there because the rent was only $200, summertime was up. They'd rather spend their $200 somewhere else. And he, they said, wintertime, they'll be back. And so I would, I'm gonna reach out to Vicente tomorrow and ask him for information on that project so I can relay it to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I'm looking at the floor plan here, and they do have kitchens.
Oh, they do?
They, yes.
I didn't see the plan, I thought it said in the newspaper.
After the meeting, or we can, you'd be happy to look, show it to you. There's a community area, but not a community kitchen. Sir, welcome.
Harjit Singh, Yuba City. It has been a fascinating conversation tonight. I'm glad I was here to just hear both perspectives. I just want to say that, you know, we've, we're speaking about the homeless population, that these are also members of our community. So, you know, when we speak about these people who live in our community, it's important to understand that, you know, these people, most of them don't choose to be homeless, you know, whether it's mental health issues or whatever it might be. They are in the situation that they are in. And so when thinking about ways to help this population, shelters are nice, they're a great start, but shelters are not the solution, they are a first step. Ideally, what we want is for homeless members of our community to be reintegrated into our community so that they are working, they are paying taxes, and just regular members of our community. And from what I understand, this is the next step into that reintegration process where maybe they've spent, spent times in shelters prior. This is not free housing, it's affordable housing. And so anyone who is residing in the complex, in any of the units, they would be paying rent as you would do in a normal apartment, and, you know, so whether they're staying there for all 12 months or 10 months, whatever it might be, they're paying rent in an affordable unit throughout the year. And I think that as, as those who are experiencing houselessness begin to reintegrate into society, you know, it, it doesn't come just out of their own will, and which is why there seem to be supportive services for them as well. And so I'm very excited to see that a project like this has been proposed. I hope that our community continues to propose further projects so that we can help all members of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Was it Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, my name is Richard Cray, Yuba City. I'd like to thank this gentleman for his comments because the staff, the private, the housing authority and these folks have brought forth what looks like a step forward for Yuba City. And the citizens of this city deserve some action from this council. I would hate to see you guys kick the can down the road and hit, listen to all the naysayers, say, oh, I don't like this, or why can't they get a job? We need to do something. This is an opportunity for action, and I, I hope you take this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now, Claire, you're gonna have to forgive me if I'm wrong, but judging by your body language, you seem fired up.
No, no.
I'm just, okay.
No, I just...
I just want to remind you to be courteous.
No, I am very courteous, no.
All right, go ahead.
Vincent Burns, I'm back. I just put my arms, I get that a lot, I get that a lot, I look tired, man.
All right, you're good.
But I was just gonna say that I've been spending a lot of my free time down at the river bottoms, and this is something I'm pretty passionate about. One of my employees' sisters lives down there. I've had employees who's lived, lived down there, and I've had employees' fathers that live down there. I've been down there talking to them on a weekly basis. And my experience from that is, and coming, the knowledge I've gained from them is they don't want to come back into society. I am 100% for a project like this. I think this is a great step. But my employee sister, down there six, seven years, she goes, I don't want to come back. I talked to two people on Friday, two or three people. I don't want, this is the way I want to live. So I don't think that, you know, a lot of people want to come back into our ways. And another question I had was, too, is, is there a limit on how long people can live in these units at such a low rent? Because, I mean, if it's super low, then you don't want to aspire to pay a normal rent, which is 1,500, 1,600 dollars a month. So that was it.
Thank you very much. Well, you know, I've never had the pleasure of meeting you except right here, so I just want to, it's my job to maintain order in here, you know what I mean? It's all good. Gus, if you don't mind, I wanted to have a couple follow-up questions from their comments. We already clarified that there are kitchens. As far as the clientele that will be living in this housing, are they vetted, or is it just the first-come, first-served type thing?
Absolutely vetted.
Perfect.
Mr. Mayor, background checks are done for violent criminal activity, sex offenders, you know, just not allowed.
And then is there a time limit?
Uh, no, it's, the funding sources are for permanent housing.
Permanent?
Yes, not transitional.
It's not a permanent building, it's a permanent residence?
Correct.
If they want to, all right.
There was a, just a comment I wanted to clarify about our capital accounts. And, and the comment was made, why can't we loan that money? And it's a good question, but those accounts are restricted to property. And so as you heard Mr. Gale mention, deed restriction, so we're, by law, I can't loan any money from, from, you know, Project A to another project. They are, those dollars are restricted to pay their debt, take care of their capital improvements, maintenance reserves, operating reserves. So it's, we can't use those monies to co-mingle other programs or projects.
All right, thank you. And did you have a comment?
Yeah, Gus, while you're still there, too, can you please let council know that on the rent, as the tenant does well, that it doesn't stay that rate?
Uh, yes, Councilmember, so rents are based on income, so as incomes rise, then rents rise as well. And, and there could, there could come a tipping point where someone's income is too high, and they don't qualify to live anymore. And so then they're served a notice to vacate due to over income, and that does happen at some of our properties. And then so, then you move on to the next person on the waitlist.
Thank you, Gus.
Yes.
I'm not just up here playing on my computer, I was doing a little research. So it appears to be an Assembly Bill Number 346, signed by the governor in 2017. And I would ask staff to probably look into this. It's Assembly Bill Number 346, which would permit the use of these funds for homeless shelters. So, that being said, I think that that's probably an issue that would need to be clarified.
You mean, do you refer to the money that we're talking about spending here?
Yeah, this, this is definitely coming out of the low, the low mod housing funds.
Okay. That goes back to the potential use of the money, which is why we're kind of wanting to kind of lower, take a smaller percentage of our total pot. Does anybody have anything else before I continue?
Well, I want to make sure that the intent in looking this up was not necessarily to torpedo your project.
No.
It was the appropriate use of the funds.
Right.
Understood, sir.
And, Mr. Mayor, just to follow up on that, because we've heard comments both sides. As a council, we've only been on the job nine weeks. We want to tackle this whole project with the homeless, but as he said, it's more prudent use of the funds, not to torpedo, but you potentially have another 450. We only have so much money. We want to make sure that we use it in the best light. This is not that we don't want to do something for the low-income and the homeless. We absolutely do, we want to do the right thing and the most prudent thing.
Absolutely, thank you very much. Anybody have anything else?
Through the mayor, I, um, thank you for clarifying on that. I was looking at the old previous legislation when I made the comment earlier. But that said, what Councilman Boomguard just mentioned, the allowability to use these funds in the structure that you're proposing is still allowable. Um, but it's also allowable for shelter. So there's two options into that, that's, I just wanted to hear that. And I think I'm good.
That's it, all right. Anything else? All right, so we have a motion on the floor to proceed with staff's recommendation with the exception of the amount. That would be 400,000 instead of 850,000. I'm just gonna take the initiative here, and what we call, I learned the term recently, a friendly amendment. If, if I may. The 400,000, I believe, presumes that we're going to get the 450 from the homeless consortium. We don't, we don't know that they're going to loan the full amount requested, just like we probably won't either, right? So, and I also kind of want to have a prominent presence and send a prominent message that we do support the notion of affordable housing. I would not want the undesirables that are being vetted out living next to me as well. But it's hard not to get emotional here, but we have homeless kids down there. That's why I'm supporting this. Because if we're into that, we're gonna get a kid one day that he's, that he or she doesn't sleep under the stars or under the rain. That, that's enough said there, okay? So my friendly amendment would be, this is going to be experimental, that we, we loan up to 600,000. Once we find out what the homeless consortium will contribute. I also piggyback on that, I'm not sure the mechanics of this, but I would like to offer a 10% reduction in impact fees with the exception of the public safety aspect of our impact fees. In addition to up to 600,000, depending upon what the homeless consortium loans. That would be my friendly amendment to that, if you're, we can go back and forth, whatever you prefer, sir.
And, Mr. Mayor, I'm good with that. I just figured we would handle that in a special meeting after we found out what the homeless consortium did.
Yeah, okay. And I would also like to add for the motion, this is all contingent upon the planning commission's approval of the project. I'd like to do that now so we save time later if they should approve it. That would be my motion.
Yeah, I'll second it.
To the mayor?
Yes, sir.
There are certain limitations on the council's ability to reduce impact fees without also backfilling them from another funding source. So there are, and I'm sure Robin can probably talk to you, or Darren can probably talk to you a little bit more on that. So I would suggest caution before authorizing a certain reduction in those fees. Perhaps that the fees could come from the identified housing sources first, and then if we can reduce the, the development fees and backfill them from a different source, that'd be something that you could do then.
All right, so we can move forward today with the consideration of potentially offering these folks a 10% reduction or whatever?
Yes, and you can direct it to come back for that additional 10% if you like, and you can address it at some future date if it becomes necessary.
Okay.
I, I'm good with that.
You're good with that.
Ms. Espendola?
Espendola.
Espendola.
You called me Espenosa. I was called Gloria the other day, hey, I take 'em.
All right, so we have, well, my mission, and we have a second?
I have, yes, I said it.
And we have the friendly amendment to the friendly amendment referencing the impact fee reduction with the exception of public safety appropriations.
And to the mayor, just so I'm clear as to what motion is on the table, and the public's clear as well?
Yes, and I'm clear, thank you.
So the, there has been a friendly amendment to Mr. Shaw, or Councilmember Shaw's motion, and it's been seconded by, seconded by Councilmember Espendola, and that would be, that the amount would be 600,000. There would be a proposed 10% reduction in impact fees, but if that were necessary, that item would come back at a future date for further consideration by the city council. And the entire approval would be contingent upon the planning commission approving the conditional use permit for the particular project.
Very close. The, it would be up to 600,000, essentially it's what the consortium contributes.
Contingent.
850 minus what the consortium contributes, and we will contribute up to 600,000. And I think the way you phrased it was, if it was necessary as far as the impact fee reduction, I think if it becomes possible to reduce their impact fees, if we can find a way to make that happen, of course legally, I would like to do that for them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And of course, contingent on the planning commission approval. Are we all clear? And we, do we still have a second?
Yes.
We do. All those in favor?
All right.
Oh, whoop, I'm sorry, one more comment?
Just, I'd like to comment, so the $600,000 that we are going to give a loan to, to the regional housing authority in the future to come, within the next year, we're gonna end up getting approximately 1.4 million in our general fund off this $600,000 loan. So I think that is a very good investment, a very good investment. And...
Good point.
I'm ready for you, sir.
All right.
And, and I'm sorry again, we've just been talking here to the mayor.
No problem.
With regards to that 10% reduction in impact fees, I'm assuming that does not, that, that does not include public safety?
You excluded that.
And does that include connection fees?
That's a good point, I would say no.
Okay, I'm seeing Councilmember Shaw saying no, and if Councilmember Espendola can say no as well, that would be a friendly amendment.
So we're not reducing connection fees or public safety? The other thing is 10%. We're, I mean, they're gonna get 10% less for the library, that type of thing. Okay? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. All right, we're good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Thank you.
Good luck tomorrow, Gus.
All right. Long discussion, but I think it was, was worth it, it was good. All right. I wrote all over your, I'm supposed to say now. Number 10, Presentation Investment Report from the quarter ending December 31st, 2018. And Spencer, go for it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. And I will be bringing before you the treasurer's quarterly investment report for December 31st, 2018. The market value of the portfolio as of that date was 112.7 million. Of that, 87 million were city-held, which includes 6.4 million of flood control agency funds. 25.7 million trustee-held, which is held in various bond issues. 11 and a half million decrease, net decrease from the last quarter. This is not unusual because we have had, as of December 31st, you have to receive the lion's share of the revenue through property taxes. Salaries and benefits, there's about 8.9 million. Flood control, construction costs about 11.7. Fifth Street Bridge, we received a reimbursement claim, 6 million. And sales tax, about 3.9 million in the quarter. And FEMA and OES reimbursements to the flood control agency for 2017 storm damage made about 3.7 million as the noted, notable transactions. Nine investments matured or sold, 10 purchased, average sold 1.6%. Average purchased yield, 2.91. And from this graphic, I'm hoping that you can see that about 61% of the portfolio is in bonds, agency bonds, US Treasuries, muni bonds, corporate bonds, and CDs and commercial paper. And about 12% is in LEAF and 27% in cash and money markets and other cash-like investments. This maturity distribution reflects a conservative portfolio that favors anticipated slight increases in interest rates and modest economic growth in the coming quarters, as well as large construction-related cash flows from both the Fifth Street Bridge and flood control agency projects. I included this slide just to mention yield quickly. You can see the city's yield is 1.12. Uh, you can see the city's yield is 1.92%. Um, yield is what we expect to earn on our investments. Our portfolio yield has continued to climb. It was 1.53% at the end of the first quarter of 2018 compared to 1.92 today. I want to point out that our portfolio yield does not match the market ever because we tend to hold on to investments to maturity, and we will always be behind the market when yields are rising, like now, and showing yields much higher than the market when yields are dropping, uh, like six years ago. Our number one focus, uh, and that of the statutes that determines what we can invest in, uh, are to preserve principle. We never want to invest a dollar and have it be worth less than a dollar at maturity. This is why the investments available to us are so limited and why you may hear, uh, from anyone who takes interest in the subject, that their own portfolio way outperforms the cities. And with that, I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Through the mayor. I, just a couple of quick questions.
Yes, sir.
I went through the report. What is our investment policy on holding individual stocks? I mean, I'm not objecting to it, and I, I get it, you know what I do for a living, but I raised the question because I believe before you said we were basically fixed income liquidity. There's stocks in our portfolio. I went right through the big long list that was in the report. Apple was in there, Pfizer was in there. There's a few positions, so I just want to make sure we're clear
Absolutely.
with what's in there, because your graphic didn't allude to any equities. It was all fixed income. So can you just clarify that for me?
Absolutely. Yes, there are no, there are no equities in our portfolio. When you see Apple, those are actually corporate bonds. And so those are a little bit different, and, uh, equities would be stocks. And what we, what we need to clarify is that California government code, code 53600, uh, does not allow equities in a portfolio for public agency, period. But we, we can hold commercial papers, which are based on a, uh, promissory note, and we can hold, uh, corporate bonds, and that's what you're seeing.
Yeah, you're good. And, um, the, um, I get that. Can we have them update our sheet? Because the others, there's GE, there's a ton in there that's Ford, that's listed as corporate paper. You know, bond, I mean, uh, bonds. Those were not listed, and that's the reason I brought it up. It strictly said Apple Inc. So they just kind of forgot the tag on that, and so it was in the detailed report that you sent out. So if they could make sure they're crystal clear, I probably will never have that question again.
Yeah, I'll be happy to make sure that they say bonds. Maybe, maybe we can look at the, the detail together at some point, and you can, you can show me which parts were most
Be glad to. Thanks.
I have a question then.
Oh, sure. Of course, Mr. Mayor.
Both of you are going to have to not, try not to laugh. What's corporate paper? He laughed.
Commercial paper.
They're both laughing.
Commercial paper is, is basically a, another, it's, it's an alternative to a bond. It's a promissory note that says that if we invest, you know, X number of dollars at the end of a period, and it's usually a shorter-term investment, then the, they, whatever the entity is, the enterprise will pay us an agreed-upon amount. And so typically, we would purchase these, and they might be at a premium, might be at a discount, but in the end, they fit into our portfolio because they match a certain maturity.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
My microphone. Very good. Thank you very much. Alright, final item is, uh, number 11, financial report. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Now that Spencer's got you warmed up for financial items, I'm before you to present you with the six months financial report through December 31st, 2018. And tonight I'll be providing a very high-level overview, the first six months operations for both the general fund and the city's utility funds, the major operating funds of the city. On February 26th, we'll be providing a budget 101 workshop, providing an overall budget, uh, overview for city council and city staff. That will give you a more in-depth review of each of the individual types of funds and more information as it relates to the city's budget. Tonight, um, basically the workshop will be more forward-thinking. This is looking backwards to what's already happened for the first six months of the fiscal year. This is the overview of the city's general fund at the very highest level. It shows the original budget, um, as adopted by city council last year in June with all the amendments. The pointer here. I know there's got to be a pointer.
It's not on, Robin.
Judy, do you know what? There it is, green light. Okay. In the budget column, that's our fund balance at the beginning of the year per the city's comprehensive annual financial report. The revenues that were budgeted at the time the budget was adopted with all the amendments for any grants that we've received, and then the expenditures. The reason expenditures are out of, uh, alignment with budget is due to encumbrance carryovers at the beginning of the fiscal year. Anything that was an open purchase order from last year that carried over into this year where we had ordered goods or services, but we didn't actually owe the money because we hadn't taken a receipt of whatever the services or the goods were that were to be provided to the city. That said, the original adopted budget was 42.1 million in expenditures. To that, um, we've added several items. The largest was grant-funded appropriations of $1,196,100. Prior-year purchase orders of 462,000. The additional unfunded actuarial liability payment that we made to CalPERS in September, 450, excuse me, 454,300 was general fund. The safer grant local match share of just under 207,000, and other items of 19,000, bringing us to the total shown here of 44.4 million in appropriations as of December 31st. Um, with that said, it does show on an actual basis over here that we're in a deficit position as of December 31st. That's very typical of our activity level. Our property tax revenues don't come in until February, so we're always in a deficit position as of December 31st. So council shouldn't be alarmed about that. It's a pooled cash issue where we're drawing on other city resources uh, to keep the general fund afloat during the first six months of the fiscal year. I look at it every year. Um, this is very typical. It's actually even less than what it was last year. So, um, that said, we're in, we're in good financial shape. The UAL payment that's included in here, uh, as far as expenditures that you see there, the 454,000 that I mentioned, um, was an additional payment. The total payment was 3,874,000 that we made all in July for the entire fiscal year. So half of that would be attributable to the second half of the fiscal year. Can you advance the slide for me, Judy? I don't know why it's not doing that. Thank you. This is set up to show you the yellow portion is the percentage of cash received as of December 31st, adding up to a share of the rest of the gray line. The end of the gray line is 100%. So what you're seeing there, property tax, for example, is very, very small because we don't receive any property tax revenues until February typically. These are some small cleanup payments that the city received. Uh, but for the most part, those revenues come in in February and May with a small cleanup in August of the following year. We're 50% through the, the fiscal year as of December 31st. Sales tax is just under what we would expect to see for the fiscal year, but we've had a lot of anomalies with sales tax due to CDTFA and their, um, software conversion. So that's all kind of catching up with itself as they process payments and get their software system up and running. By the end of the year, we're confident that this will all be very, very close to what we've projected in our budget estimates. As far as assessed valuations, um, they came in 4.89% increased over last year per Sutter County's assessed valuations for our general fund. The budget included a projected 4.3% increase. So slightly over what finance projected, um, will come in by the end of the fiscal year. Thank you, Judy. I always show city council 14 quarters of data for sales tax because it's the largest revenue for the city's general fund. You can see that in recent quarters, it's been mostly positive. The last two quarters on a cash basis are very low, being down 10% and then being up 15.9%. That was all due to the CDTFA adjustments where they were doing their software system conversion. At, overall, the last two quarters, our auditors say we're up 0.1% and up 1.9% to the best of their audit abilities, giving all of the late reporting, duplicate reporting, et cetera. Uh, I feel confident, though, that by the end of the fiscal year, we will meet the projections that we have in our budget. Hotel motel surcharge revenues exceed 25% for the first quarter in our cash receipts that we received. We don't expect to hit 50% for this particular revenue category because at the midpoint of the year, we don't receive the December report until January from all the motel hotel owners locally. Building permit revenues are at 50.4 of our budget estimate, showing the seasonal uptick of development that occurred in the summer and the fall months. They've leveled off currently, and we expect to see an uptick again in the spring. Special police services are at 32.5% of the amount budgeted. But again, we have quarterly billings that go out on that, and we won't receive those revenues until January. So that's again a cash flow timing issue. Business licenses are only at 13.3%, but that's because we send out revenues, um, we send out the business licenses annually in January. So those have just gone out, um, within the last month and a half. In summary, finance currently anticipates the majority of city general fund revenues to be right on track with budget estimates by the end of the fiscal year. On the expenditure side, side of the equation, this slide is set up the same way where if the yellow one all the way across, we would reach 100%. It shows you that salaries and benefits are at 52.4% midway through the year, in excess of the 50%. Again, this goes back to the payment of the city's unfunded liability to CalPERS in July. We paid it to save interest charges and fronted the money in July, but it's for the whole year. I took that payment and cut it in half, and that would show if we hadn't done it all at once to save money, we'd be at 46.7%. And we would estimate budgetary savings in salaries and benefits for the general fund at about $340,000 through December 31st. 43.8% of the amounts budgeted for operate, operating, um, material supplies and services have been expended halfway through the year. The total general fund expenditures equal 50.1% of the amount budgeted as of December 31st. So on track, um, given the fact that we prepaid PERS. I have one more slide that contains citywide information, not just general fund data, and then I am going to move on to water and wastewater. This shows the city's pension liabilities as of June 30th. It shows you the, the assets and the safety. Safety fund here, miscellaneous there, and total citywide shows you the liabilities for the, the safety plans, miscellaneous and total. And then what we refer to as the unfunded liability, the amount that CalPERS says we owe based upon past service estimates, uh, versus with the assets that we have on hand with them. For our safety plan, it's 36.5 million, and that compares to the prior year. It was, it's up. It was 35.9 million last year, just to give you an idea how it's changed in a year's time. And the miscellaneous plan, the unfunded liability is now 33.8 million. That is down 3.6 million. It was 37.4 million last year. The total net unfunded pension liabilities are 70.3 million. And if you offset that by what we have saved in our pension stabilization trust as of December 31st, shows we have a net pension liability of about 67.7 million. Moving on to the city's water utility. Water fund operating revenues are at 52.4% of budget. Water revenue increases were 10% approved effective July 1st, 2018 in order to cover operating debt service and infrastructure renewal and replacement costs. Revenue from billings are being generated as planned. However, consumption declined in four out of the first six months of the fiscal year, thereby causing revenues to drop below the expected 10% increase. And I'll show you that on the next slide in just a minute. So it would appear revenues are coming in as expected, but that's not the entire story. The rest of the story is that revenues are typically in higher in July, August, and September when people are watering their yards, planting their gardens, watering their gardens, et cetera. A few other things to review with you before we move on to the details of the six months of billing. Capital connection fee revenues are at 46.1% of the amount budgeted. Operating expenditures are at 48.1%. They're less than budgeted expectations at this type of, at this time of year, we would expect it to be closer to 50%. I looked to see why. Salaries and benefits, um, there was some savings there. So we have 4.75 vacant positions. I know it sounds weird to say 4.75, but water and wastewater often share positions. And then the operation and maintenance accounts were also less than expected. Debt service only includes the December 1st interest payment. Principal and interest are paid on the outstanding bonds on June 1st. So that's when the largest payment goes out for debt service. Uh, through December 31st, we've only had one interest payment. The monthly utility billing comparisons. I apologize, my colors don't show up real well here. Revenues are across the top comparing 17, 18 for each month, um, from one year to the next. And then the change in revenue percentage here shows you that revenues were up, for example, in July by 10.4%. They were up 7.9% in August, and so on and so forth. Um, on my slide, this is a different color, so it's a little easier to see. I'm sorry it didn't show up real well on the screen. The consumption data here are the units that were billed by finance. You can see the change in consumption here was in July, we were up 1.6%. Down 2.6% in August, down 3.2% in September, and so on and so forth. So I averaged the change in revenues to see for the first six months of the year how close we came to the 10% we were expecting, and the average was 8.08%. So pretty close. The delta there was all due to the decrease in consumption. The wastewater fund operating revenues were at 49.3% of budget, right in line with budget expectations, very, very close. Capital connection fee revenues are at 24.6%, significantly less. Um, I followed up with Diana, and we discussed this to try to determine the rationale behind it. And what we determined is oftentimes when people pay connection fees, they vary depending upon the size of the water connection, whether it's a one-inch connection, a two-inch connection, et cetera. So the revenues could come in higher for water connection fees than what the sewer connections are, because typically those are just a one-size connection and one charge. So, um, we were able to better determine and understand why one would be higher than the other. Because you think when construction happens, a developer would pay a connection fee, and they would be somewhat equal as far as the percentages, and that's not necessarily the case. Looking at, um, expenditures, they were at 43.7, 43.7% of the amount budgeted and are therefore significantly less than expected. Looking to see why it was two categories, two categories, salaries and benefits. There was 3.75, uh, 3.75 full-time equivalent positions that were vacant. And the biggest one was professional services. They're significantly less than budgeted, but what I was able to see in reviewing the detailed reports is we haven't expended the money by sending a check yet, but the funds are committed in the way of a purchase order. We have a lot of outstanding purchase orders for professional services. And I know that's something that city council has inquired about in the past. So as part of the budget 101 presentation, city staff is aggregating all the professional services expenditures on a citywide basis, on a department-by-department basis to show you where those funds are being spent and what they're being utilized for, so that you'll have a better understanding and more information in that regard. So that'll be coming next week to you, um, during the budget 101 session. That said, um, I don't anticipate that by the end of the fiscal year, we'll have that much savings because we do have all those funds committed in the way of purchase orders. Only a couple more slides left. I left last year's slide into my presentation. This is as of December 31st, 2017. I want to explain this to you, and I want you to see the change from last year to this year. Finance has been tracking the amount of capital connection fees available for payment of debt service for many years due to the decline in development activities. The decline has resulted in a corresponding decline in the amount of connection fee revenues received by the city. We maintain these funds on a separate basis for connection fees. We look at the enterprise utilities as a whole. What you see in the city's CAFR is the water utility and the wastewater utility separate. But we track things very distinctly and separately. We have operating funds for each of the utilities. We have connection fee funds where we have those restricted funds that can only be used for improvements that benefit new development. And we have debt service funds that the only purpose for those funds is to service debt service. They pay interest and principal. They hold bond reserves per trustee agreements that are required, set-aside funds per bond covenants. And then we have CIP funds that we track for each of the utility funds for their capital improvement program budgets that span potentially more than one fiscal year typically. That said, we look at the capital connection fee funds every year on a separate basis and compare the amount of debt service that we have to pay every year. In this case, for example, as I said, this is last year's data. We have 1.5 million in annual debt service for the water fund. The cash available was deficit. We've been watching this for years, and we were concerned that it was going to become deficit. It did last year. The wastewater fund still was fine last year. We had the 1.2 years of debt service coverage that we like to see on the books. We were about six months in the whole last fiscal year. Another way of looking at this ratio is the cash required that we'd have to have in the bank to meet the 1.2% coverage is about 1.8 million. If we were in the hole that much, that's how much short we are. I always like to look and compare, this is the standard that we would like to see, this is where we're at. So we've struggled with this and hoped that development would occur. It's not at the level that we would like to see. So it's important to me that City Council know where we're at with this. We've talked at the staff level, because we made improvements, for example, on the water fund side, which was supposed to be funded 75% from connection fees. We're not getting those revenues in. If those improvements had a 30-year useful life, we're roughly 14 years into those bonds now. The 16 years in the future, if development occurs, they're only going to get the benefit whenever they come online and start receiving the benefit of the improvements. So as city staff, we're going to go back and take a look at this at some point and start likely coming to council and asking if we can adjust those percentages, because it doesn't make sense to keep charging connection fees and getting it further into the hole. That said, I'll show you what it looks like as of December 31st of 18. Thank you, Judy. Significantly different. The cash available as of December 31st, 18, is now 2 million to the negative for our connection fee fund. And again, there's a very heavy debt service load on the connection fee fund, paying 75% of old improvements that were done in 2002 and 2005, when we sold bonds originally for the water fund. So as staff, I'm wanting to make you aware that this is something we need to take a good, hard look at and rectify, possibly looking backwards, some of the payments that were made, figuring out what might be a more appropriate and/or fair ratio. Because at the end of the day, we have to make our debt service payments that we've covenanted to as part of our bond agreements. We don't want to default on our bonds. But if there's no capital connection fee funds there, our bond covenant say operating revenues shall cover this cost. So this is showing you that as of December 31st, we were 1.34 years in the hole on the water side, 1.09 years of coverage available on the wastewater. Again, looking at it from a completely different perspective down on the bottom. If the required ratio that's recommended by our bond covenants is 1.2, then our cash requirement would be 1.8, and 979,000, call it a million. The amount we're short is a much bigger number. So I wanted to show you last year's and then combine it with this year's to show you that our problem is getting worse. And it's time that I think we have a serious conversation about solving the problem instead of kicking it down the road. So coming in the future, that'll be something that I'll be bringing back to you. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Through the mayor, I'm going to beat Shaw on this one. Robin, you have made accounting enjoyable and at the same time very real. So thank you. I appreciate how you presented those. I don't know if you did this or your team helped out with the...
We all work on it together, yes, absolutely.
It was really well done, so I appreciate that. The, I, I, I like the fact that you were able to do the comparisons of one year to the next, you know, to kind of give us an understanding of possibly where we're heading. And the reality is that there's some big decisions that are going to be, need to be made here. And, but with your leadership, I feel very confident, and with Diana's leadership as well, you know, confident that we can try to do some well-thought-out decisions. And I encourage the community to come to the workshop next Tuesday, right? 5 o'clock? Is it, are we meeting in here?
Yes.
Yeah, 5:15.
5:15 in this room. So it's open to the community and city staff as well, right? Anyone can come in.
Absolutely.
And, and listen to all of the information that we will listen to at the same time. So as we move forward in making some decisions, there is clear information given to all of us pretty much at the same time. So there is no surprises of the numbers of what you see. And so with this, I have a much clearer understanding, and I appreciate the fact that you've taken the time to really make this easier for those of us that are not a Shaw financial advisor, travels the world on a private jet. I don't know. But anyhow, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Through the mayor. Can I have that private jet she's alluding to? Teasing. Robin.
When I'm done with it.
Okay, when you're done with it. Robin, first of all, I just want to say thank you. Great job. That last slide was rather depressing.
I know.
But I do like the fact that you brought it to us and said it's time we make some decisions, because I think this council is ready to step up and do what's needed to be done for a long time and make the decisions and fix things. So I look forward to working further on this. I appreciate it. Just want to say thanks.
Well, thank you very much, Robin. I too appreciate all the effort you and your staff have put into. I also echo what Councilmember Shaw said, that the heads up, the train is coming. We really appreciate that. It gives us food for thought until it does.
I've been saying, well, for many years, that it was going to go negative. We just didn't know when. And then it did. And then this year, it was so far in the red that I was like, okay, I need to show the comparison of where we were a year ago, along with where we are now, to kind of show the transition of how we got to where we're at. And then some proposed ideas for solutions, because I don't want to bring you a problem without bringing you what I see as a potential solution for consideration.
Appreciate that. That said, any member of the public would like to comment, please feel free to come on up. All right. We will go ahead and move forward with business from the City Council, beginning with Councilmember Boomgarden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Last couple of weeks have been busy covering meetings for my colleagues. First meeting that I attended and just wanted to give a brief report on was the Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency, where we saw Mike Inamini, the executive director, leave that, that organization. From what I gather and from what I know, he was a tremendous leader and a tremendous asset to this community when it came to flood protection. He leaves, he leaves a great legacy. One thing that I found that I would like to pass on is he's going up to work on Oroville Dam. That gives me a great sense of comfort that he's going back to the DWR. Mike Baset is the person who's the interim director for Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency. Seems like a very capable and knowledgeable, professional person. Sutter, the Subufco will be trying to select a new executive director. And I'm sure that we'll find somebody who, well, will hopefully step into Mike's shoes. I think Mike Baset's certainly a qualified candidate. He's a current city employee. And I look forward to that process playing out. On that, during that meeting, we covered a lot of issues. So sat with Councilman Cardoza. Some, some of the issues were fairly easy, but this is a board that involves membership from Butte County and our local county. And there are some things that, as this project starts to wind down, are going to need to be dealt with. But I look forward to continuing on that. I also attended a SECOG meeting for Mayor Harris. It's the Innovation and Policy. Actually, it's called the Policy and Innovation Committee, where we learned that there's going to be some traffic funds made available for this year in the amount of about $60 million that the city could potentially apply for portions of that. But there's even more rosy news in that in the next year, they're forecasting a possibility of $120 million available. And spoke with, with our staff, and I'm encouraged, they've got some projects that they're ready to already put in the pipeline. And kudos to you guys for having those ready, because they made it very clear that projects that were quote-unquote shovel-ready would be available to be funded. And James Corliss, I've said it already tonight, very, very capable executive director. Staff very helpful. This morning, I attended a countywide oversight committee meeting. Our finance, our director of finance also attended that meeting, along with Darren Gale. Interesting, this is the group that, and you guys correct me if I get this wrong a little bit, please. But this is the group that's the successor agency for the redevelopment agency. Councilman Shaw is a regular member. Discussed a lot of, of issues, not necessarily issues, but historical references to what's going on with the redevelopment agency. I'll be, I'll be honest with you, as much as I was here for a lot of the redevelopment agency stuff, not to add anything more to your already full agenda, but it might be helpful for, for other members on the council to just go back and say, okay, these are the obligations that, that this successor agency has. And just give us a, it doesn't have to be a long presentation, but just bring us up to speed. I think it would be worthwhile. Wanted to, final thing I wanted to talk about was, I mentioned in the last meeting that I was interested, and I was encouraged to have other council folks along board for this fireworks, countywide, or excuse me, community fireworks. I've come to find out that Mike Leahy from Yuba County was instrumental or was a big player in this last time they tried to get this thing going. So my, my work over the next week or so is to try to connect with him. I don't want to redo anything that may already have been done, but I'll be able to report back to, to the council any movement. And then again, I appreciate the help from my fellow council members. I do want to clarify one thing, and that is I'm not looking for Yuba City to be the sponsor of this. I'm looking for Yuba City to be a participant in a, in a community effort, because I believe this will benefit the community, not just our city. Thanks.
Well said. Thank you. Councilmember Esmondola.
Can you believe that we're 12 weeks as a new council? It's been a few busy, busy weeks. Lots of new changes and some business as usual, as we have discussed today. But there's one first thing that I would like to begin is I'd like to request to continue the discussion on the item regarding the planning, the economic development commissioners' ordinance and practices. I would like to have my recommendation presented at the next council meeting on March 5th. Mayor, if I can have that placed on the agenda, I would really appreciate that.
Yes. Do we know what that's going to consist of?
It's the previous meeting that we had. I was going to formulate my thoughts on how these commissioners or the ordinances could look like. And we've had a time lapse between the staffing and myself, so we can meet, if we can move it towards March 5th. I was hoping to do it by today. It didn't work out.
So on March 5th, you're going to present your, the information you found out?
Along with the city staff, yes.
Okay. Very good.
Okay. Thank you. So on February 7th, I attended the Yuba City Homeless Consortium. That's a meeting that I've attended for years, but with Vice Mayor Cardoza. And we had, the centered conversation of that meeting was about the point in time. The point in time is conducted every, every other year on the count of the homeless community or on shelter beds every other year in between odd years. We also had discussion about the funding that the Housing Authority was talking about, but there's no release on the information of the heap and cash funding that potentially is going to be distributed to multiple nonprofit groups, government agencies, and others in the community. And I'm sure Vice Mayor Cardoza will add something to that as well. On February 8th, all of us attended our city employees appreciation dinner. It was well-done, planned by the entire city staff. Not the entire city staff, there was a committee, and food was provided by them. It was a theme party. Some of us dressed overly, and some of us, just council member Cardoza, anyway, did not dress so, but we like to support our city staff and employees, because as I, as I mentioned, we're entering our 12th week, and we can really see now, beginning to understand our talents and our challenges. But I was really impressed with the dinner, and it was a nice evening to recognize our exiting city manager at that, at that dinner. Well, very well done. On February 14th, had a chance to spend Valentine's with Vice Mayor Cardoza. He and I attended our Yuba City School District liaison district meeting, first one. This meeting happens quarterly. Also, Sutter County Board of Supervisors Flores and Solinger were there. Board of Trustees Riley and Jackson were also present with Superintendent Osumi. And we talked about, and our city manager interim, I'm sorry, was there, and our exiting city manager. There was, there was a lot of people in that room. But some of the highlights of areas that we talked about was on safer routes grants and road improvements. And one of the bigger topics was discussed about the trucking, a property behind Berry School, and that particular property being used for trucks, a trucking-type business. And some pictures were shared of how some concerns about this. And I don't know if Vice Mayor can add to that, because he knows a little bit more about that particular issue than I, as I learned about it that same day. And then today, I attended, Congressman Garamendi had his open house or open office day at our senior center. It was a full room. There was quite a bit of community there, asking questions, giving updates. I also attended with him to the Ampla Health Center, did a tour there. Very impressed with the telehealth systems in our community. The telehealth systems are the new, modern way of utilizing health services in very rural community areas. And the system that they're using at that site is also located at seven other locations, which it's on a regional basis, but this same system is used internationally all over the world. So it's quite, I mean, it was really interesting to, to watch the process. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been working. Thank you, Councilmember Boomgarden. Thank you, Councilmember Cardoza. They covered two of my meetings. My other one was canceled because of no activity. That was the Gilzeiser Water District. We have Yuba Sutter Transit, not Yuba Sutter, Regional Transit Authority coming up Thursday night for a public hearing at 7, correct? It's open to the general public. Also attended the...
Also attended the employees appreciation. Ms. Langley expressed my gratitude to our entire staff, well-done event. It was a fun night and it was great seeing the council dressed up to where you couldn't recognize us. It was, other than Councilmember Cardoza, we always recognize him. So more to report, and I will be back into the social stuff once I come out of my busy season of tax filing season. I will continue to make or make sure all of my meetings are covered. Again, thank you to you two gentlemen for covering those. I do have a couple of items, Mr. Mayor, if you might entertain. Brought this one first up and it's because it has been the season for all the different events and to attend. And we're also going into budget talks. So Ms. Langley, do we have a process for requesting sponsorships for events? That's a formal process or what happens?
We do not have a formal process historically. The city has supported certain events within the community such as the summer stroll, chamber events. But I know there are a lot of other agencies that do have more formalized processes. And so if it's council's direction, staff can research what other agencies have in terms of a formal policy and bring that forward to council.
Okay, that would be my wish, Mr. Mayor, if we could explore that because right now it's, it doesn't appear that it's the best utilization to, you know, how we pick organizations and how we do different things. We all want to be involved in things, but we need to make sure that we're respecting all the organizations in town and making sure that we're being prudent with our funds. So I would like some kind of formal policy if we could have that discussion on that item.
I think that's a good idea. If we could go ahead and prepare a report around that topic and present options, perhaps based upon other jurisdictions and whatnot, especially if we have literally nothing, it's case-by-case basis at this point, I understand?
Correct. We can do that.
I would appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Okay. And then the other one that, these are just conversations that came up. Proclamations are worthy, they're special, and what is our formal process for requesting a proclamation?
So again, historically, council members have come to staff and requested to place proclamations on the council agenda. So there's not a formal policy or criteria to determine what qualifies for a proclamation?
Okay. It's just my opinion that these types of things, we've talked about media exposure, we've talked about council events at prior meetings, but this is another one that we need to formalize some kind of procedure. And Mr. Mayor, I'd like for us to entertain that because if there's something coming in a proclamation, it should come from the council and, you know, I, you know, hey, Tom, I think you deserve one, so let's give Tom one. But I think it needs to come from the council as a whole. Could we entertain something like that?
It reminds me of something similar in the past where we had either at least three members and/or the mayor may present the option. Is that what you're getting at?
That would be a general guideline because that's how we get things on the agenda. You have to have three council members all sign off on it to give the nod or the mayor is the trump card, he just overrides it. But I think that would be more prudent when we're making, you know, special presentations.
Okay. What, Diana, what would you recommend on that procedurally? If we wanted to modify our creative policy to where three council members or the mayor may present something forward for proclamation?
So staff can prepare that and bring that to council for action.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Very good. Thank you.
Through the mayor, can we add to what Councilwoman Shaw just stated? I think one of the, and I appreciate your thoughts, Councilwoman. I think that standards and practices are important. I also hope that we're not becoming a council that is trying to micromanage every aspect of our work as a council, as a group, and as a council independent too, because we all have different work that we do for the community. So having additional procedures and it's just, you know, I think is appropriate, but let's also give some allowance for our city staff to work within the proclamation. I'm not thinking that there's a whole need for a whole large study of it, but I'm good with the other parts of the sponsorships.
Okay, that would be something we can discuss once we bring up the staff at the next meeting. All right? Good point, though? Both good points?
In terms of the sponsorships, I'm not sure that we will have the research and staff report completed in time for the next meeting. We will certainly try, but it may actually be the meeting after that.
And, you know, I think given the topic, that would be acceptable. And it's also important, I think it's a good point because proclamations come from the entire city. And I think as such, we are the city council after all, and then we should move that forward. Now, nothing presents individual members from drafting letters of appreciation individually on city letterhead, if that's where we want to go. But a proclamation, I do believe, should come from the entire council as it comes from the entire city. And again, we'll discuss that later in March. Sir?
Okay. Okay, just had a few meetings, which have already been mentioned. I'll just go through them quickly. The Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency, school liaison, homeless consortium. And last week, I attended my first Sutter County Museum Board meeting. We had potluck, talked about a lot of good things for the future of the museum, and there's going to be a lot of great things happening in our museum here in the very near future for city and community events. Like I said, attended the awards dinner with the rest of the council. I went to the board supervisors' meeting and representing the council and presented a gift from the city to Scott Mitnick, leaving, he was leaving Sutter County. We gave him a small gift from the city council. We attended council, council, we attended a presentation for our new training center in EOC by Chief Daley and Senator Nielsen. Two receptions, one was for Mike and then the other was also for Steve. The mayor and I attended the home dedication by Faith Build Habitat Humanity. They gave away, or didn't give away, they gave four homes to four families that they did, they had to do 400 hours, 500 hours in order to have these homes. And then, so it's helped to get these folks off the street and moving forward. I attended the spaghetti dinner for the Sutter County K-9 and Sheriff's Posse with the mayor also. Pasta for a Purpose was campfire dinner. It was sponsored by Recology and lots of several sponsors. There's Stevens Farmhouse. There's so many people that I didn't keep track. I should have wrote them down. I apologize. The fundraiser was whatever you wanted to pay. You walked indoor and they just had a bucket, you put your money in the bucket. And they raised over $25,000, which they're going to pass out to the folks here in the community to help them get back to paradise. Also, Virgil Atkinson, he hosts a weekly dinner. Matter of fact, it's every Tuesday night. I told him I couldn't make it this week to welcome the folks from Paradise that are living in our community. We have 40 trailers, the folks are living there. Anyway, he has a get-together, has a band, serves them dinner, and then other folks come around and to get to know our community. That was a great event. As Virgil's, he's the host and several nonprofits all contribute the food and fund on that. Councilman Esmondola and myself, we attended the Red Hot Gala. It was sponsored by Venice Health and Rhode Island Hospital. And this was recognizing February for National Heart Awareness Month. And then Councilman Esmondola and staff members, our interim city manager, Brad, our Parks Recreation Director, his son, and Judy also. We went bowling, the annual bowl for diabetes Saturday. Had a great time. I bowled a whopping 77. Woo-hoo! Oh, many, many. With the bumpers, that was 77. Yeah, there you go. But anyway, we had a great time, was a good cause. They had a great turnout, which was a good fundraiser for that also. And other than that, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The bulk, all of my last two weeks primarily has been spent over in Japan representing our city as part of the Sister City delegation. I plan on having a presentation, a small presentation, probably hopefully at our first meeting in March, if not the second. But there, it was a, let's just say, it was a wonderful experience. They're very gracious people and I even would say it was life-changing. It was wonderful. I will save the bulk of the comments for when we have the presentation. I'm hoping to have a few of the participants here with me as well when we do so. And thank you to Mr. Boomgarden for filling in for me in my absence. I really appreciate it. It sounds like you got a lot out of it as well.
I did.
Yeah, that's good. All right. Anybody else have anything? That being said, we will, here he goes. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm assuming we're going into closed session on the last three items?
We are. We're adjourning into closed session.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.